Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting for the Waterloo Schools, and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our mission statement, the Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continued education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. So the first item then on our agenda this evening is information from individuals and delegations, and I would ask our Board Secretary to come forward. I believe we do have a comment for this evening.
Correct. Let me take that up. We do have one comment, Board. I will send you this email after the meeting tonight so that you can have it in writing. You'll notice when you see that that the date on the email is August 25th. I received the comments from the gentleman the day after our last board meeting, but he did still want me to read them to the Board tonight. And it is from, the gentleman's name is Patrick Kaiser. He is a West High parent. He says, "I would like to express my complete displeasure with trying to resolve an issue at West High with the grouping of my daughter for days going into school. She does a shared ride with other classmates in dance. I started out by calling West High School to get her switched to Group B and was given the runaround by office people. After the third phone call asking for the principal, I was giving to another department for some reason. This woman was very unprofessional and has absolute no people skills to even listen to what I was trying to say. Not sure how or what her job is, but very unhappy with her. After another call and asking to discuss with the school board, the principal finally called me back. She understood what I was asking and said should not be an issue. Then on Friday before school starts, she sends me a text, not a phone call, that they could not change my daughter to the other group. This caused a lot of stress and anxiety to my daughter for absolutely no reason at all. If West would have given us this information weeks in advance, maybe other arrangements could have been made instead of the week before school starts. Obviously Waterloo Community Schools is not concerned about the parents and issues they cause us by not doing their jobs in a timely manner. If West cannot handle a simple issue like switching groups, then I totally understand why parents are moving their kids to other schools like East or Cedar Falls. Signed, Pat Kaiser." And that is the only one I received.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to just add to this that because that was received, you know, almost a full two weeks ago, that issue actually has been resolved at this point, and the student has been moved. There was just a freeze on moving students from A and B, and so I just wanted to let you all know that that had happened. And Dr. Lindeman, if you want to add anything?
Yeah, not really. Well, yes, one thing.
I mean, I know we-
No, no, the, um, the principal that he references in there is actually me. So he, yeah, he texted me on a Sunday morning, and so I replied to him right away, and I said, "Let me see what we can do." And so I worked with him all week, and as it turns out, we just had, we had like a hundred and some requests to switch. So I just told him that we just needed a few days to see exactly who was going to show up, and I just, I asked him for one week if we could just hold. And, um, and I, he was just, he was hoping that we could do it that day. He wanted it done before Monday of school, and so I just asked him to hold for a week. In the end, we were able to resolve that, and we did get him switched, but, so, or get her switched. So we got her, we got her switched, but I just wanted to let you know that the person he's referencing is actually me.
So for the other ninety-nine, or how many students were we able to resolve?
Yep. We just needed to see like who was going to show up, because we still had kids switching from in-person to virtual and back and forth, and so we were trying to look at class sizes so that, and then they took all of the kids who were As who requested to be Bs, and then they took the kids who were Bs and requested to be As, and they kind of measured those out, and they looked at their schedules, and so they were able to do that. In the meantime, in that week, some people had also called and said, "Never mind. We didn't think we could get arrangements," but now they see who's in their class, so they're going to write, so some of them withdrew. And so they were just trying to get that, and so we just asked for a one-week freeze just to get our land legs, because we hadn't done that. So we did, we did get it, but I know that this particular gentleman wanted it right away. And I, I get that. It's, it's hard, because he was just looking at the one, but I was trying to look at all of those. So, anyway, we're good.
And did we happen to at all be able to find out who the person was potentially that was not delivering good customer service?
Yeah, I, I did not, I did not know who that was. I did not know, and he was not sure any names or, so I don't know.
So are we, are we stable at this point?
Yeah, it's good now. I think we were able to grant all of the requests besides the people who pulled them out. So, and that was, um, East had some requests too, and they granted all of theirs, but they had significantly fewer. I think maybe they had a dozen. Not very many at all. West had quite a few, so.
So we were able to still balance class sizes?
Yeah, for the most part. There were some that, you know, as we did it, we, we had originally talked about doing it by alphabet, like A through J comes on and is an A, and, and the other ones are a B. And so, um, in the meantime, Infinite Campus actually came out with a program that actually looks at all of them and makes a suggestion of whose As and whose Bs to balance all of the classes, so we used that instead. And so they were pretty stable, but, um, are pretty consistent, pretty balanced, but there were a few classes where, you know, it couldn't balance everybody fifty percent. So there were a couple of classes that were, you know, maybe, you know, twenty and eleven or something like that. So, and I did hear one, one teacher had shared with me that they had eighteen in one and four in the other. So they did, um, work to try to resolve that the best they could, but knowing that if you switch to balance one class, you might throw another class out of whack. So, um, they're, they're pretty good, and I think, I think the staff are, you know, being really good about having non-balanced classes in some cases, but I think for the most part, Infinite Campus, the software did pretty well.
My daughter's in a class of six, which is great for her.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's just, it's, you know, there's nothing else that can be done.
Yeah.
So what's the, what's the primary reason for wanting to switch?
Transportation. In this case, um, in this particular case, the student carpoolled with another child who was in a different group.
Is that common, is that, was that a common reason, or?
Well, um, it was some of the reasons. Others were, you know, my best friend is in this class. There were some. And we, we understood that. I mean, we, we tried to do that, but it's, if we're not going to let everybody pick, then, you know, either you run the system or you don't run the system. And so, and, and a lot of the, a lot of the requests, to be honest, went away after the first week of, they, they said that before, "I want to be over here," and then after a week of school, they're like, "Oh, you're in my class? Okay, I'm good then." So, a lot of them did go away.
But I think that's a valid reason to have at least one friend, if you will.
The hard part is that a lot of them didn't know. They didn't know who was in their class yet, because they hadn't seen the rosters, and so we just said, "If you can just give us a week, that's all." So I, I felt like, we felt like that was fair, but I, I also understand, you know, it's, it feels urgent.
Because socialization is one of the, I think, advantages of in-person school, and even though it's not like it was, uh, we can accomplish a certain percentage of that by doing, by being flexible like you are. So, I think that's good.
All right. Well, then we'll move on to the consent agenda this evening, which consists of six items. The minutes of the August 24th, 2020 regular board meeting, which is item A. The personnel appointments and adjustments, which are item B. The bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings, item C. The donation from the RJ McElroy Trust, which is item D. The agreement between the Waterloo Schools and the Cedar Falls Community School District, which is item E. And the Tri-County Child and Family Development Council Incorporated Contracted Service Agreement, which is item F. So are there any items that Board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
B as in boy.
B as in boy, okay.
F as in foxtrot?
F as in foxtrot. And I'm going to remove item D, because I work for the McElroy Trust, and so I will be abstaining from that vote.
Uh, B and E?
B and E. All right, so then can I have a motion to place items A and C on the table, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant C.
Okay.
So C and E.
C and E.
Sorry.
Okay. So then can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 24th, 2020 regular board meeting? Thank you, Sue.
Second.
And a second? Excellent. Then we'll move on to item B, which are Personnel Appointments and Adjustments, and that recommended motion.
We need a vote.
Oh, and we need to vote. Sorry, 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 sorry. All those in favor then of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Sorry about that. Um, that takes us then to item B, which is Personnel Appointments and Adjustments, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education approved the personnel items as listed. Thank you, Jessie, and a second?
Second.
India, and discussion.
Just quick questions about the district subs. Have we used those currently in the past two weeks, those positions? Um, I think we approved in the previous board meeting two other positions at the very top, and so we're hiring two more. These are the other additional additions that we're hiring.
Correct, and there'll be one more, there'll be one more at the next board meeting.
Okay. So have we, have they been working currently, or are they just basically on call, or?
No, they, they have to report to the building every single day.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're working, um, I think this one in particular.
Kingsley, that mic's not on. There you go. We got you.
Um, I was wondering, I thought I could hear myself. So, yes, three of the building subs are currently working. Actually, all four of them are working right now, so yeah, they are working, yes.
Okay, and remind us the buildings they're in again?
Okay, so you have Expo, Carver, Lincoln.
Cunningham.
Cunningham, and there will be one more at Bunker.
Bunker, okay.
Now, I will tell you that there may be some, thank you for remembering, I totally forgot. Um, there will be some maybe changes just based on, right now, we had one of our buildings that just had a a rash of absences, um, so we may have to make some changes that we didn't necessarily know, or add maybe additional building sub. Um, but we're still working those plans out. Many of the plans that are articulated, both in the, um, weekly update but also at the last board meeting, are working effectively with our, one, our building subs, but also, as we talked about before, our para certification program as well, where paras are, are in a lot of buildings stepping up and providing that support.
Okay. I'm glad that you addressed that. I was, I was going to ask, I know that we have these district subs going to these buildings, but let's say there is another school that is in need, they can be transferred over if need?
Yeah, we really want to be careful with doing that, and so that's where we're, we're looking at it, reviewing it this particular week, because, again, there's one particular building that has had some issues with subs, um, just because of the number of absences, or a, a, a little bit, a couple of absences that were problematic, and so we're working on that right now.
I'm curious, so as we move forward in the year, let's say there is a building that has less number of students in that building, um, so the need of maybe not needing the sub, can, again?
That's exactly what we're looking at. At, at the time, we use that, to use, we use prior data to say, these are why the buildings need subs. As we're looking at, you know, I know Dr. Morhan and Dr. Lindeman, as we're looking at the data in the building and seeing, you know, hey, we, at some buildings, we may have gone down to two teachers per grade level, and all those other teachers are going virtual or moved to a different building because, based on the numbers, we would make, need to make some determinations on whether or not the district sub is feasible at the location.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be something where, if we got to the point where we're seeing the need in other buildings, that we would be able to have a full-time floater then as well?
So that is what a district building sub is?
I mean, to float to all different buildings. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Or is there just not a need for that?
There's not a need for that yet. I, I honestly, I think that, you know, um, Lyle's question before is more of kind of ever-present in my mind as far as, okay, if, if this is working, do we need more? Again, we're going to look at it from a budget standpoint and make sure it works. I'm not saying that the idea isn't workable, it's just one of those things where, it's just one of a balance.
Well, and I ask, I guess, because, you know, we have, there's so many leaves right now, and I know then that also staff, when they're out for the two weeks for quarantine, um, that kind of stuff, that we need a long-term sub, if that would be something that the district one would be used for, or not?
Yeah, it's definitely-
I mean, if it's not, but if, if we don't have one for that building.
Could be a floater as well. Yeah, we can look at it.
But I guess with all this conversation, I would, I do not want to discourage our sub list. How many do we have on our, you know, like that?
Teacher-wise, about a hundred. Yeah, about a hundred. And so that's where, I mean, to answer your question, also to answer yours, it's just been two weeks. And so, you know, for us, we want to look at information over the course of a month, maybe even a quarter. And so we're not, we're cognizant of maybe the immediate needs that are happening, but we also don't want to jump too quickly and then all of a sudden shift a, um, a position and needed another building. So we're, if you're getting feedback, we're just waiting and seeing at this time, but we do know there's ever-present situations that we need to find a solution for.
So are those one hundred not including the paras who are getting the certification, right?
That's correct. That's not including the paras that are getting the certification. That's an additional thirty.
Okay, oh, great. Okay, thank you.
Where are we at for pairs?
Overall?
Overall.
Um, we're, we're short, shorter than I would like to be. Uh, we have a number of different positions that we need to fill. Now, both to India's question and to your question, um, you know, with the building need being less at the, at the in-person level, that's helping our need not be as, as necessary, I was going to say as needed, but as necessary. And so we are looking at that. We're, we're trying to find out whether or not we can find other avenues. I know that we've reached out to, uh, our workforce, and unfortunately, they're still not available or open at this time to do interviews like we've done it before, because we've just said, "Hey, are people available?" Then we show up and provide in-person interviews at that time. And so we're looking at other avenues where we can reach out and, and find some positions for people.
So is it that they're not applying for the job, or, or do we run into not being qualified, or?
No, it's more about, we, we hit a, we hit a note at the beginning of our, our year where we had a significant amount. I think I remember talking to you about, "Hey, everything feels really good right now," and then we had eight paras leave. And so that would, that's what doesn't feel good, and so we have some need that's apparent right now, just from two weeks ago, that at the time I felt pretty good about. It, it's more about there's some concern overall with health and safety in general, and I just wish that we would have had that conversation earlier in the summer months to plan effectively for it. So I think that's, that's been the concern.
So, so between resignations, leave of absence, and retirements, I think there's fourteen on the list here of paras that are, are leaving. Some of them, it says, end in nineteen twenty. Are th, are these just post-dated? Or are these people that we, that started twenty twenty-one this year and then resigned since that time?
Yeah, some, when you say start, some of them may let us know, like, that they weren't coming back. So maybe they started on a leave, or they were on a leave, and then they decided, you know, after the first week of school, "Hey, you know what? We're not coming back." And so that's where you see that situation where you'll see a resignation at the end of nineteen twenty, because we, we backed them up to the end of nineteen twenty for the resignation.
But, so-
Do we have enough, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, so the primary reason for so many on this list is, is, again, that's essence of my question, is, is this new information to us, or were some of these expected, or?
Both. Some of them are expected, and some of them are new information, from what I was talking about, as far as people kind of coming back or kind of not coming back, and then saying, "You know what? I don't want a chance at, I'm going to resign." And so it's a little bit of both. Some people have already let us know, and then they're just coming off a leave and maybe letting us know late. Uh, but for the most, it's both at that, I mean, at this point.
So it's, it is for the most part, uh, health-driven?
A lot of it is.
By health concern?
Yeah, a lot of it is. I mean, you have to understand that many of our para educators are, are working, you know, very closely with our students, and so I think because of that, um, they're making decisions as far as what that looks like. And so we're going to be having some more conversations here shortly with departments, obviously buildings as well. I know there was an email not too long ago that were some follow-up as far as, "Hey, we saw this person resign. Can you give me some more information?" Um, as far as why the concern was, maybe we're able to get that person back in, depending on the situation.
So the environment of hiring new paras, where are they, are we having candidates that?
We do have candidates for the positions at times. I think the, the problem is normally our push and our season is really around the, the summer months. You know, we're dealing with situations now where our principals, I can think of one building in particular, just haven't had time to interview candidates. And so there's candidates applying for the positions, but they literally just have not had a second to actually go through the interview process, um, in a timely fashion. And so we're going to have to work through that, and I can, um, I can spend some time at the weekly update preparing some type of rapport as far as the true in and out and the reasons with our exit survey information as well.
Uh, my concern then is, are there enough special needs paras in the buildings to fulfill what is legally required for IEPs and 504s?
That's a tough question. I mean, yes, I mean, at this time, yes. Now, the, a reason why I hesitated on answering that is because I, we got to figure out and have a meeting about, okay, are we able to sustain, can we get some people back in? I know that, I just had a conversation with Director Gentry today about some needs at a couple of our buildings, in that, you know, there's a need of a BIS here and a need of a special education one-on-one para here. And so from that standpoint, I can say yes, because that generally happens over the course of the year or even the start of the year that we have positions moving in and out. Um, but let me get back to you on where we're at, not only from a special ed standpoint, but also from a general para standpoint as well.
Are any of the paras working virtual only?
No.
Okay.
Have your, have you had paras?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, the problem is, it's always nuanced for an answer. No, not in the setting of our true all-virtual. Yes, as far as in one of our buildings, Expo, like the virtual program that they've always run, there is somebody that's working virtual, one para that's running virtual.
So I'm just curious, how do you handle those students who are special needs who are virtual? I mean, they don't need a para? Like, I don't know, maybe they don't.
I'm going to ask the illustrious Dr. Morhan to step up to answer that question.
So one of the disadvantages of choosing virtual education is that the IP had to change. So someone that may need a one-on-one para, that's not possible with virtual. And so there had to be an IEP meeting though, and that's, the, the, the special ed department is still working on having all of those IEP meetings with different students, and if we are finding that there are students with special needs who virtual isn't working, then they are being allowed to come back to the building and have face-to-face instruction, so.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Wait a minute, what do you mean, being allowed to come back to the building? They weren't told they couldn't.
Oh, no, never, no. But they're, but they're granted, they can come back.
You chose-
Yeah, you chose.
-in class, that was the choice.
Yep.
You couldn't go back before.
Right, you can't say one week I'm coming, one week I'm not.
We're letting them come back as we wouldn't let a journalism student that chose virtual because they signed up for all virtual.
Lyle, there were timelines, and, and if you go back to look at the re, the return to learn plan, um, elementary students, we asked them to stick with virtual through the end of the trimester. And for, um, secondary students, it was the end of, of the semester, but if it's not working for a student with an IEP, they can come back immediately.
Because I, I thought that, uh, the IEP had to be changed prior to them going virtual. Was that not the case?
Yes, it does, but, yes.
In a perfect world, it would have been.
It, it does, and sometimes you're, you're having a conversation with somebody, "Okay, we're going to let you start, but we're going to have your IEP meeting next Thursday." So there, the timing is a little off sometimes, but the parents are always involved, because they're the ones who are making the decisions.
And there's always been, yeah, there's been communication, but the official, actual meeting, it might be on next Thursday, or it might be next Friday to get, yep, to get the pages all, yep, where they need to be.
But all the parents of our students with IEPs were notified previously that if you have an IEP, it may not work virtually, correct?
Yes, the roster, roster teachers contacted them, and we have done something that other districts didn't necessarily do. We've allowed them to try virtual learning, because we want to really be family-friendly, and we want to let our parents, if they really feel strongly that their students need virtual learning, for them to try it. For some parents, they've already realized, "This really isn't working. I want to come back face-to-face," and so that's what's happening.
So is, is, is the percentage on, uh, virtual for IEP students about the same as the population in general?
I actually don't know that question on the, I know we have all of the numbers. I'm not exactly sure of the percentage of that. So let me get back to you on that, because we have around fifteen percent of our students, I believe, um, identified with, um, IEP needs.
We have hard numbers, but I don't know that we have percentages.
We do have to go back and look at that, but I'm not exactly sure if that comes out to fifteen percent of all our virtials.
I mean, I can see it both ways, that on the one hand, you would think it would be a greater percentage in person. On the other hand, you don't know the health situations of any of those who are in IEP, so it could swing either way.
Is there some, you know, physical reasons they want to?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the need for closer contact.
Yeah.
You want, you had a question?
Yeah, um, and, so do we still have a para sub list, and how many people are on, on the para sub list? Because I know you have a para then stepping up to teach a class, then you're losing that para who may be legally bound to be in that classroom, or not that person. I just mean that there should be a para in that classroom. Does that make sense?
Yes, so our para sub list, I mean, that's the one that fluctuates a lot, because both the para subs, both, um, help with our paras and also our secretary, um, positions as well.
Oh.
That's, I can't give you that number off the top of my head. I just know that I talked about the teachers one. I can follow up with the email as far as where we're at on that. In general, when we have those situations where a para needs to step up in the class, the expectation is, um, in that classroom, that the teacher is providing some level of support with the minutes. That's why I could say to you confidently, yes, but it's not sustainable. And so, I mean, obviously, we wrote the, I mean, we wrote the IEP and the plan to, to walk through instances where the teacher's providing SDI for a number of different students, um, in the room, and so they'll need that additional support. So could it happen one or two days? Yes. Could it happen a month? No. And so right now, yes, but that's not sustainable, and so that's why I want to get back to you as far as what that looks like and what our plan is as well.
I'm sorry, I only have two more for you.
Oh, of course.
Okay, so on the leave of absences, that has nothing to do with people who have to be out for COVID, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so, does a person, does a, a staff member have to apply for leave of absence is if they have been, if there's someone in their home then that may be positive as well?
That's a good question. So, no, they don't have to apply for a leave of absence per se. They do have to go through our FF-CRA application process, and what that means is that we just want, because you can, we want to open up the opportunity of, um, you using whatever leave that you feel comfortable with, because some of it comes with full pay and some of it comes with two-thirds pay. Not to get into the, the detailed of that, and we can, we can talk afterwards if you'd like, but with that, we want them to make a declaration to us that they're choosing that, instead of like, for example, if they're in need of potentially not, um, having to work because of caring for another person, that's two-thirds pay, but you can use family illness, which is full pay. And so with that, they may make a determination that they'd rather use family illness and keep that FF-CRA, or vice versa. So that's where we want them to make a declaration to us in the sign, in the form of a application to say, "This is what I chose, and this is what I've signed to choosing."
And so they have to do that even if they feel like they've been infected by that person, and they're quarantining?
That's different. That's, that's, that's truly FF-CRA. That's, well, it's truly, that's truly full pay, and that is, we go through a totally different process with that.
And that doesn't count against their sick days then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Kingsley.
So I will, uh, make sure I get you something about, um, special education, staffing in minutes, paras, and also just some better guidance on the FF-CRA and what we do.
One, on a real positive, I wanted to say, Kingsley, is that we, um, I know we get the emails daily, and I really appreciate the one that goes to all employees every day that says, "Do not come to school if you are sick. Do not come to work if you are sick." So I think that is awesome, because that's a great reminder, every single day, every single employee of the Waterloo School District, including Board members, get that, that do not come to school if you are sick. And I think that is awesome. So thank you for doing that.
Briefly, I just say with that, I just want to thank my team. They've done a tremendous job navigating it, because it's, it's been tough, but also Dr. Lindeman, Dr. Morhan, our DLT team, because I think that, and, and again, this is just because I've gotten some calls from other districts as far as what your plan is and how you're running it, can we incorporate it? And I would say we've given a wealth of options to families, almost to a fault. Um, but we've given, I, I could say right now out of the UENs, we've given the most options for families. And so just want to give kudos to everybody here, because while it, it means a lot of work- And so just wanna give kudos to everybody here because while it it means a lot of work, I I I feel like as a parent as well, it's giving you a wealth of cho- choices and options to be able to navigate what this looks like.
He was gonna say that first word comment, so now he just took it.
Seriously, we haven't even gotten there yet and people are already stealing each other's lines, so, all right. All those in favor then of approving the personnel appointments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item C then, which is bills due and payable. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, India, and discussion.
So I I pulled this just for two quick reasons. I saw that we're, you know, Durham's back on there. Um how are things going with that, with them turning in their their, what was it, like their timesheet or their bill? They weren't we were having invoices. So we were having some issues with that. Is um is that resolved this year?
Michael, can you hear, did you hear that question?
I did hear that question.
Awesome.
The um the bill to Durham on there is for summer school transportation. So it's not involving the regular school year, and we are currently in discussion with Durham now that we have started school and there's less routes than we had last year, obviously. And they have some requests to review the conditions of the contract, so we are, Kingsley and Marty and I are just starting that conversation with Durham um in the next few days.
Is Dur- is Durham able to staff their route?
To this to this point, what we know is that they have drivers for all of the current routes and for extra.
Okay, thank you.
And then my second one was just, you know, there's a lot of the the building costs, you know, you see itemized in there. Are those all wrapped into what we got for bids? Or is this money that's not what we like, is that money that's not going towards like Lowell? Or is it part of something that we already had a bid in and then it just comes in as as the bill? As they have the bill.
What are you specifically, do you have a specific line item?
Yeah, there's there's several where it's um
Page number?
Okay, I didn't read, bring reading glasses, give me a second.
Put it on your screen and boil it up.
So like I had a bunch of them. So there's the Envision Architecture, um
It's on page thirteen, right?
Yeah.
That one?
And on ten. Um and then there's another one for that. Um and then there's uh Faler Hurley Construction, one for fourteen thousand on page ten. Um the Ferguson Enterprises, is that a construction one as well? Or is that different?
That machines, Ferguson's a machine.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um then Freed Construction on page ten, there's eighty-six thousand, um
That was a Kingsley rough.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
See, he could tell you exactly.
Okay, so but so all the stuff basically that we that comes in from different constructions, if they were part of an um a bid that was already put in, those were already expected costs and then they it won't cap that, correct? Like it won't go above what the bid was for? Is that correct?
Unless we have a change order.
Right.
What? I'm sorry.
Change order? Like they come to the board with the change
Order that something is going to cost more.
Approve that.
Yeah.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Or less.
Yeah, sometimes it's less.
Sometimes we
If it's significantly off of what the budget was, what is the number? If it's ten percent under, ten percent off of what over or under, then it comes to the board or to actually comes to the facilities committee first, but then it comes to the board to vote on all change orders so that we can, and it's a signal to the board that it's different from what was originally approved.
Some stuff is
The change order limit is five thousand.
Okay.
A percentage, it's a dollar.
And that's plus or minus, correct, Michael?
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and there's like a the Whopper to Larson for six hundred and nine thousand, and that's Lowell, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
No, some stuff we'll just never see anyway. I mean, as far as yours, you gotta get to a certain dollar amount, we gotta approve it anyway. Some of it's just
Yes, Michael.
Um just for a reference to the board on page thirteen, that last little section of bank account sixteen.
Yes.
That is the save dollars.
Okay.
So that would be the Lowell demolition, the whole project and finishing up um W C C, so it's only the big projects that come out of save. Um the other construction um amounts, most of those are coming out of P E P L.
Yep.
And that's on that list that Marty goes through with the facility committee. And yes, if it is a significant amount, we do get bids and um but is all planned projects through Marty's office. And um that's all coming out of P E P L money.
Right, like the roofing project that we know, we know those roofing projects well ahead of time.
Correct.
And now looking at that, like Blackhawk County Treasure, would that be um, cause we wouldn't pay property taxes, what would would be they permits or what would that be?
Page is that on?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, Michael.
Down within the save, the
Bank number fourteen, first line item.
Well, I know save and um no, I'm not exactly sure what it is, but it's that sounds probable. Some kind of a permit with the city, but I can find out and or with the county, I'm sorry. Um I can find out and let you know.
No, I just saw that, thank you.
All right. Good. Okay, then all those in favor of approving the bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item D, which is the donation uh from the McElroy Trust. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accepts with gratitude the donation in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars from the R J McElroy Trust for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Youth Emergency Fund as presented.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Jesse, and or and Astor first and then Jesse. And as I said earlier, I just pulled this to, I will need to abstain from this vote.
And I wanna thank you, Michael, for giving us um that breakdown of the schools and um because obviously, looking at this sheet right now, we're seeing, okay, these schools got zero, but why did they get zero? So I appreciate that. And um also, I just wanna thank the McElroy Trust for, um if you would take that back, Shanley, because um um it's just a wonderful thing that we can have this at our disposal for every building. And if there is a problem with, you know, they find a family in desperate need, they will help them. And I really appreciate the trust for stepping up to do that because um those extra dollars aren't always there. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. I'll be sure and take that back to the my trustees. Um and the other thing I would say is that we try to start the year with five hundred dollars for the elementary schools and then a thousand for the high schools and the middle schools. And certainly, as you said, throughout the year, if there's stuff that comes up, it's really, there's not, there's no limit. It's just and Jeff uh Sommerfeld uh works really well with our executive director in in asking for more funds if necessary, so.
How often do the schools, I was just reading the last line, which says we do not add to the funds at those schools that still have a substantial balance? How often do we have a, do schools have a balances?
I would say hmm maybe six or seven of them at the end of the year have a balance. And then, but generally, some of them will have a balance because they ask for, we had um some that asked for some funds in the spring and then they didn't get spent because we we, you know, were closed down.
And Michael sent us that breakdown that showed which one had balances.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are these funds generally used by the family support workers or the counselors or, I mean, is it a building or a principal? Or they just?
Yep, all the above.
No specific?
No specific person, they're not earmarked, and they also, they do come with a set of guidelines. So um what they, you know, what they'd like to see them spent for, et cetera, but they really do pretty much use them at their discretion. And they provide then, um still privately, they provide the information of what was spent, not not and how, but not to whom, back to the McElroy Trust just as that. So that happens too. As a double check. It's not mine. It's not mine.
Who's writing? It's you.
So anyway. All right. So I'll take the, I'll take those thanks back to them and and that's the the reason why Astor, it was intended was just be really for whatever yeah, within reason, I mean. Yep, whoever needs it. So um is there anything further? Then all those in favor of approving the donation from the McElroy Trust, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair abstains.
With great gratitude.
With great gratitude and the motion carried. Thank you. Um that'll take us then to item E, which is on page eighteen. Um and this recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the Waterloo Schools and the Cedar Falls Community School District for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year as presented.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion. Thank you, Sue and India.
Um so coming in, I I don't know what the this Cedar Falls P L T W is, that program. So if I could just that's the project Lead the Way. So we have a a student who will be going there for their project Lead the Way? Is that what's happening? Right?
You're not, okay, there it is. Hi, Stacy.
Hi.
So that is um any of the CAPS courses. We have a twenty-eight E agreement with them so that we have kids going there to take classes and then they come to our buildings to take classes. And this was a course that we used to have, but since that time, we haven't had staff at the high schools to offer it. So we opened that agreement up for that one CAPS course that's similar. It's an engineering, intro to engineering course over at Cedar Falls.
It was great at West.
I know.
We got rid of it, Mike loved it.
And I will say, just talking to Jeff Ross, we have so many more engineering entrepreneur courses now at the Career Center that it's sort of fading itself out. It was unique at the time, but now we have so much more to offer. But yes, it's a lovely course.
Thank you. And can I get like a list of acronyms? So I'm not always asking this stuff.
You will ask that for the next thirty years, right? I mean, it's, there are so many acronyms, it's
I've asked, Pam actually has a list that we started because when I started on the board forever ago, um I said the same thing, we have so many acronyms, so she's got a pretty good list.
I would love that.
You have a list and retired list acronym?
Right, right.
There's so much new that comes that
We'll keep adding to it.
We'll put it in the we- the third, the weekly update.
P T L W.
That it stays. Okay, yep.
Shree, real quick, how many students do we have assigned that
Same program.
Who are enrolled, who are going?
To take that one course, it's just one.
Just one.
Oh, we did have one.
It was only one student.
It's just one.
And so they offered that for the one.
Yep. And normally, we wouldn't have because if we both, if we both have that course, obviously, we're not gonna share that student.
Right.
And we just didn't have the staffing to offer it this year.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, then all those in favor of approving the agreement between the Waterloo Schools and the Cedar Falls Community School District, say please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item F, which is on page twenty. And this recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the contract service agreement between Tri-County Child and Family Development Council Incorporated and the Waterloo Schools for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
So move.
Thank you, Jesse, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sue. And discussion, and I know Dr. Char's here, so she can come forward. I don't know who pulled this item, I can't remember.
Maybe.
I didn't.
Aloud it.
I have I have questions.
Okay, well, go for it. And discussion, let's go.
Number one, is this in-person?
Yes.
Hundred percent in-person?
Yes.
Okay. And is the number of students more or less than last year?
Uh actually, it's six less.
It's what?
It's a little bit
Six less.
Six less.
Six less, okay.
And where does this money come from?
Uh it's a federal grant and our local grantee is Tri-County Child and Family Development Council, Inc.
So the five thousand dollars a year, five thousand eighty-four dollars a year uh per student, is that covered by the grant or hundred percent?
Basically.
It says here, we got a one percent decrease from last year.
Actually, it's uh increased because we're gonna serve less of their students.
Cause we're six fewer students, so in, even though the total amount might be less than last year, it breaks out to more. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay, sorry, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. Right.
So this is about eleven dollars per hour per student per day. Uh which is about the same, I think, as we run as a as a school district overall. Uh so the key then is attendance, so so do you know what our attendance, what the attendance normally is? In other words, if you have a hundred and seventy-four kids, are there seventy show up or a hundred and seventy?
Well, we follow the same guidelines as Waterloo Schools with the ninety-six percent expectation, and we try to hit that. And also federal Head Start, they have uh ex- expectations as well. So we do a good job. But we can get you exact numbers. I can get you the exact numbers.
So it's ninety, so it's ninety percent plus, you think?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Easily.
All right.
And in typical years, don't you even have a waitlist for students that wanna get in?
We try not to keep a big waitlist, but yes, maybe ten or less. Yep, so we can replace.
And so what are the locations currently?
Oh, wow, we have them all over, so let me just get that. We serve them at Cunningham, Becker, Elk Run, Highland, Irving, Ketchikan Early Childhood Center, Lincoln and Orange.
So that's six. So there's about uh thirty kids. Thirty kids, twenty-five to thirty kids at each location, so it's like one class?
No, they're integrated. So they're dispersed throughout several classrooms. So like at Orange, if we just have three classrooms, then maybe it's sixteen, eighteen slots there and they're dispersed. You know, we serve Head Start and voluntary preschool.
Right, it's not all just Tri-County in one space.
No. No.
How how is this different than the voluntary preschool? Like, is it, are we offering different programming? Is it different, are we aiming at different family, like?
Yeah, social economic need. So we wanna serve the families that are most in need.
Right.
Head Start is a two-generational approach to ending poverty. So these fam- families have to qualify, they're in dire poverty at a hundred percent of the poverty federal guidelines.
Okay.
It's the same program that's being delivered, no matter which class they're in, it's just and I don't think, Dr. South, correct me if I'm wrong, but no one really knows. I mean, it's not like you walk into this classroom and you know, this is a voluntary pre-K kid, this is a Tri-County Head Start kid, this is a they're just
All integrated.
All there, getting, they're all pre-K kids, getting there.
The haves go with the have-nots.
Yeah. Yes.
Which we hope will eventually mean everyone's halves.
Yep.
Um and so my last question, um so does Head Start then own the Elk Run Early Childhood Center or is that a Waterloo Schools?
It's a Waterloo Schools location that may be hopefully coming offline pretty soon. It's an older building.
Yeah, I was just reading, you know, that it Head Start provides classrooms at the Elk Run Early Childhood Center.
We have two three-year-old classrooms in our district. We don't serve three-year-old students unless they have a individual education plan, which is known as I E P. So they have two rooms there that we, they have so we can have inclusion opportunities for our students that have I E Ps that are three years of age.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
So are there
Oh, okay.
That's just where they're housed.
So are there rooms in the new Lowell pre-K building accommodating any of this?
Yeah, we we actually have not designated which classrooms which teachers will be in there, but we actually had a conversation about it today. So we're starting to have that dialogue about which classrooms will go where. Um and I think that will be decided over the next, you know, six, eight Um, and I think that will be decided over the next, you know, six, eight months.
So we're anticipating, uh, the Waterloo District providing some.
We will continue to work with Head Start where they'll be housed. I don't know, it could be at the new center, it could be somewhere else. We, we're as, as Dr. Sodat mentioned, we're, we're looking at all the classrooms that are at Elk Run to determine where they might be. So that is the task du jour.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for explaining things to me, Dr. Sodat. I really appreciate it and for what you do.
Thank you so much. And I apologize, I called you Dr. Shar, but that's because we go way back.
That's the handle, Dr. Shar.
I know, but I should have called you Dr. Sodat, pardon me, so, okay.
And I just have to say, I hardly recognize you. You look tremendous.
You look so great.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Have a good evening.
Alright, you be well, thank you. Alright, then all those in favor of approving the Tri-County Family Development Council Incorporated, uh, service agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. So that concludes our consent agenda. We'll move on then to item G, which is on page thirty-three. And, uh, the recommended motion here, this is a board policy change. And the recommended motion is that the board approve the following policy, standardized dress code. And I will ask that Tara Thomas come to the table. Um, but can I get that motion on the, uh, on the board, please? So moved. Thank you Stacy. And a second?
Second.
Thank you Jesse. And discussion. As we talked about, if I don't mind, I'm just gonna jump in, we talked about just, truly, this is just truing up our language, removing a few things that were not really relevant any longer to our policy. And that we talked about looking at a standardized dress code, some changes perhaps in the future, but maybe not the second and the third week during a pandemic school year. So. So.
Correct.
That's what's before you.
So, since we did not have, we rescheduled the, um, policy committee meeting, so we didn't really get a chance to talk about that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, so with that said, we really haven't been able to talk about some changes with the dress code.
Right.
At, at this point. And so with this second reading, I feel like maybe, could we wait until we meet and talk about, I know that about the changes for the dress code? Or we're just voting tonight for the second read for some of these changes?
We're just voting to true up the policy that we currently have. And then I think the revisiting of the entire dress code thing would, would be a separate, as, as I would see it, it would be a separate item that would come before Student Services and perhaps a combination of Terrace Department, but I, I didn't know that y'all didn't meet, so I don't, I don't have your meeting scheduled.
Yeah, why, why didn't we? No one explained why we didn't have it.
There weren't any policies brought forth with updates, so there would be no agenda.
But I thought that the point of the policy review is that every time that there's, that like you go through the whole policy over, of, like a.
Every time there's some. That's a good question. The, the policy review, every five years, policies need to be re-upped or rea- renewed. And so there's a cycle of those, and so when those, so we, we get a list once a year, they start with, um, all of the lists that needs to be reviewed during that year. That would expire during that year. And so as directors or whoever are looking at those, they bring those forward to the policy review because that's the next line of, that's the next in the chain. So the policy review looks at it and then it comes here for first reading and then a second reading. If there aren't that, any that have been, um, reviewed and are ready for the policy review to, to bring forward and put forward, then there's, if there's nothing, then you don't meet. So the Policy Reviews Committee, their agenda is, or their, their mission is to be the first step on renewing those policies. Does that make sense?
So we only look at one when, so we have a set agenda throughout the year of what needs to get done, but we only look at it when someone else brings it to us?
So there's a list that goes out every month and it has a breakdown of every single policy and the year that it's up for review. So for example, there might be two hundred for the year of two thousand twenty. Each policy is then designated to a department head. He or she makes changes or reviews it and determines there are no changes. And then it comes before you and the rest of the Policy Review Committee meeting, once they give it to our department, in this case Sandy Lanigan, to put on the agenda. So some, sometimes, in the case of recent weeks, because there has been so much other work for some of the department chairs, they have not found the time to review and make all of the edits, so they can't bring it forth yet to the Policy Review Committee until such time as that process is completed on their end.
So if a, a head of a tar- department doesn't see that anything needs changed, it doesn't come to us at all? We don't, we don't look at it and say, okay?
It still does.
Everyone that's up for review would come to you and it would either have suggested changes or no change. So many of the items on the agenda, and I don't know how many in your inclusion up to this point, this has been the case, but it will often say no change.
Right.
So it's still coming before you and giving you and the other committee members the opportunity to suggest changes like what India is speaking of in regard to dress code, because even though this one isn't up for review at any time, we can revisit and review a policy. So in this case, Student Services, Marla Paget, brought this forth when it wasn't necessarily up for review.
Yeah, cause if you look at the last page, they always show adopted and reviewed. So like this was reviewed in ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen. So it has been reviewed multiple times when some policies are reviewed every five years and that's it.
Okay. But if we see something that we want to bring forward, we don't have to wait for the department.
Yeah, you could just let Sandy know. She would tell you which department holds that policy. And then that individual could review it and join us at an upcoming meeting to talk about any potential changes.
Thank you Tara.
No problem.
And I would say, I guess, there were just three of us on the board when the initial dress code was established, Lyle, Shanley and I. And that wasn't just a process of like changing wording in a, um, policy. It was community input, it was, you know, and I think that would be wise again to do that. But that has to be spearheaded by someone and has to bring it up and, and then it goes through review and it comes here and it co- you know. So I, I think it's not as simple as just saying, let's look at the policy and change it. I mean, that would be my perspective on that.
And that's basically what I was saying, India, is that, not that we can't address it for sure, but just that this piece is really not addressing the entire, it's, it was just bringing up, truing up some of the, the verbiage. Um, but then a deeper dive into that would, I think, require a lot more back and forth and information. Yeah, we had a large committee that, I mean, it was a mu- it was, it was a long process.
And we sat at board meetings for hours and sometimes eleven o'clock at night, listening to people talk about dress code. So, um, it's not like we can do it.
Well, interesting enough, because this really wasn't a policy change until someone sent some emails about, so I just want to be clear. Like, we did make some changes very quickly because people referenced the gang-related information and we were on it. So I want to have that same type of energy when we come and talk about the dress code, so, yes.
Thank you, India.
And if it's not the whole dress code, just bits and pieces of it, maybe it wouldn't take that long.
Right, that's true. It could just be a few.
Vote no, though, if we, if we, if it got brought up and they didn't.
Yep, mhm, so, absolutely.
If we're all in agreeance of looking at it at least, so.
For sure. No, India, that's a great point, that that was, we have to be flexible to do it that way.
So, can I ask who brought that up?
You?
Or who, I mean.
The gang-related?
Yeah, to Tara. Did someone bring it up?
Actually, there was a community emails that were sent out regarding that. And it, we brought it to the attention of Marla and we talked about it at.
At Policy.
At Policy meeting. Am I correct?
Yes.
I think the, the emails came before we even, the emails came from community members.
Yes.
Probably May, maybe. I think we all got them. Um, and then we mentioned it quite a bit later with Marla. She received the same emails.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, so she was on it before.
I don't remember those, India, but that does not mean.
From email list.
I don't, I, I don't remember getting that. That's why I'm.
We got two. I'm like.
Yeah.
Yep, we got.
I thought everybody was attached to it.
Nope, that's okay. I mean, it, you got it and we addressed it, so.
We did, absolutely.
And I don't, if I remember right, I don't believe, India, correct me, I, I don't think either one of the emails were from somebody local, but they were addressing our policy. I believe one was from California and one was from, they were national emails. I don't think any, it was anybody from the community.
Got it.
Okay.
But this is something that's been spoken about in the community as well. It wasn't just because of those two emails.
No. Alright, thank you Tara, appreciate that.
No problem.
Alright, then all those in favor of approving the standardized dress code, um, the following policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. And chair votes aye, motion carried.
So is the second reading it, or?
Yep, yep, the first reading no, and then the second, or no vote. Alright, so then that takes us to item H, which is on page thirty-nine. And this is the Legal Services Engagement Agreement. And the ragged end of motion here is that the Board of Education approve the Legal Services Engagement Agreement with Ayers Cooney, PC of Des Moines for the Lowell Elementary Construction Project.
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you Jesse. This comes out of facilities, but I will also, um, turn it over to Michael Coughlin if there are questions regarding this tonight. This is just for our financing. Geo bonds, all that.
Do we get new lawyers or the, the same lawyers?
Michael, did you hear that?
No.
Uh, India asked if these were new lawyers or, uh, returning lawyers or.
Yeah.
Current, that we've already worked with.
Yeah, they are returning.
Yeah.
They are the principal law group that deals with bond issues in the state. Um, and they have for years and years. I think I've worked with Beth Grove over twenty years myself. Uh, so she is the authority of, of, of schools and bond. Definitely a return from, um, a good, very good source.
Yeah, we've used them, in my estimation, I think the entire time I've been on the board. I don't know, Lyle, do they go back as far as you?
I think so.
Okay.
And, and the role is a bond counselor, basically, i- in this, you know, they're attorneys, but they're, they're honing in on the bond aspect of this.
No, I feel like we have had a lot of lawyers in regards to Lowell, so that's why I'm like, is this a new one?
Nope, nope, these guys are the bond guys.
These are the bond guys, okay.
Bond lawyers.
Bond lawyers, so.
Not the ground lawyers or the building lawyers.
Exactly, so. Alright, then all those in favor of approving the recommendation for the Legal Services Engagement Agreement with Ayers and Cooney, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to exhibit I, which is on page forty-eight, I'm sorry, forty-six. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the resolution fixing the date of sale of approximately twenty-five million uh, school infrastructure sales, service and use tax revenue bond series two thousand twenty and approving official statement.
Some of it.
Thank you Jesse. And a second? Thank you Sue. And discussion. You're fine. It's all good. Um, Michael, I know you're on the phone here, if anybody has anything, um, again, this is just setting the date for the sale of these infrastructure bonds, so. Yep.
Setting it as a sale. And just that the board sees and reviews the official statement, the forty pages that are following there. Um, this is the document that goes to the investors to tell them who we are and what we're doing and what our financial condition is. So it's, uh, important that all of you see that and, um, because this is the statement of who we are.
Do you know what our bond rating was?
No, that hasn't been established yet. They are in, they are in process right now. Um, one of the things that they are waiting for is our enrollment numbers. Because of COVID, enrollment numbers have been fluctuating across the state and they want to see a more solid number from us before they set that. And that's what Jane and, uh, many others have been working on as far as getting something timely to them before sale date of the twenty-eighth.
But we won't have an official number until after the twenty-eighth, so will they take, uh, what we have in hand at the moment?
They'll take what we have in hand.
And that's relatively positive.
I mean, we, I, um, Michael actually asked me that, uh, last week. He called me to check that through and, and I said, I think we'll be within a dozen by that time, and he said, close enough. So that'll be, yep. They wouldn't want us to be off by hundreds or a thousand, but we should be close.
Okay.
And I, I thought, I really appreciated all the information provided in there, um, Michael. Obviously, by law, you have to, but on page seventy-eight, um, with the historic tax rates. I, I really appreciated that, um, just to go through the last five years and to see how we have been, um, very, um, efficient with our dollars. And our portion has not gone up, the school portion, since sixteen. And I mean, the overall tax revy late levy rate is, um, gone down pretty much for the most part, a little up there and then downswing. But the schools portion has lowered each time. So I just wanted to bring that out because, um, lots of people sometimes say, oh, schools part's so high, but you're dealing with, you know, if you look at the college next year, that's Hawkeye Community College, and that has basically gone up every year. So I, I think, um, we are being very prudent with our dollars and kudos to our financial department here at the district.
Thanks Sue. I hope you caught that, Michael. She was giving you some kudos.
I think it's very interesting to read through that and see a five-year trend or so and, um, I think it speaks well of what we've been doing, what we've all been doing with this, so.
And another proud point I thought was our, our facilities. I mean, you know, basically looking through there, um, we've had new facilities just about every single year, you know, working on, um, or, um, improvements at each facility. And, you know, with a, a new building, you know, I remember when Cunningham was like the new school and that was eighteen years ago. So. And it's still, I, you know, whenever I go through Cunningham, I think it's in good shape.
What was the date on Elk Run? I didn't see a date next to it in there.
Yeah, maybe because nothing has been done.
Out there.
You know.
From original.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
In terms of massive.
When did, when did it open?
I'd have to go look at the pic. It is on the board out here. That's why I said I'd have to go out and look at my cheat sheet. I don't know.
So just as a follow-up, this, on the twenty-eighth of September, uh, is the board, the bond sale. And that happened earlier in the day and I'm anticipating Tim Oswald to be here that day. And that he will present, uh, to the board that night. Just review any questions before the final, before the bid is accepted by the board.
Right, that's what I was gonna ask you to just outlaw in our next, our next timeframe, and that is on the twenty-eighth then, to accept the sale of the bond. The bid, okay.
And those, and those bids won't come in until that day, correct?
Correct, they will come in that morning.
That morning.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah, exactly.
We want rates to.
So you mentioned this is interesting reading, um, for everybody, I'm sure it is. But, uh, the, this would be actually good as we put a finance course in that, uh, at our Career Center. This is like Finance one oh two, probably, not, not one oh one.
But I mean, and even, you know, like when we talk of different budgets and, and, and expenditures for the district, when you look at the interest rates, which, you know, we, I mean, in two thousand twenty-one, the interest alone would be almost three point four million, the interest. So.
But the whole concept of bonding would be appropriate for.
Yes, it would.
Exactly.
Finance class for sure. I might sit in on that refresher as well, so. Alright, thank you, Michael. We appreciate all the information you provided to us this evening, so.
You're welcome.
All right, then all those in favor of approving the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Those concluded our action items for this evening, so I will turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a few things tonight. Thank you. Um, just a, a reminder that, you know, we are, we have three weeks under our belt. And starting the fourth week, so three weeks and one day, um, under our belt. And I know, you know, districts across the state of Iowa, some have chosen to go hybrid, some have chosen to, um, you know, file for applications to not, not go at all as far as in-person. Um, so I, I just, I guess just a couple of comments after three weeks of, of our Return to Learn Plan. First of all, it continues to be something that we are reviewing and, um, using as kind of this blueprint and our steps going forward. And so I, I feel like, um, I feel like we should be really proud of the work that we have brought forward with the Return to Learn Plan. I think it's gone remarkably well. Um, I really would, would toss some, some thanks to, huge thanks to our staff, who are the ones who are in the rooms, you know, working with our students and, and making this work. It is not easy times for anyone. So, um, and then, you know, I guess, you know, we should also thank our students and our families too, because there's just, it, it's not an easy time for anyone. So I'm just, I'm super proud of the work that we've brought forward. I'm really proud of the way that we're implementing it, um, and what everybody is doing. We have said very often that the, all of the decisions that we make are steps to keeping our kids in school, keeping that in-person option open. We know some have not chosen that, and that's okay. Um, but for those who did choose in-person, um, I'm one of those moms who chose in-person, and I just, I'm really proud of the, of the work that we're doing. I had a conversation with someone, uh, about the, the wristbands that we are doing for some of our athletic events, and the person was questioning and said, tell me more about why we would choose to, to limit people coming into sporting events. And I said, you know, it really is because with mass number of people, you just can't employ the, the strategies that you're trying. And I know it's inconvenient. I think everything that we're doing is, you know, can be seen as inconvenient because it's not business as usual. But I also really, excuse me, applaud the work that is being done, you know, a- all over the district. And so I, I had, Friday, I took actually quite a bit of the day to do walkthroughs in different buildings and, um, had a chance to, you know, see some work that, you know, see really remarkable work happening, really good lessons happening, good instruction happening, was also able to see a few places where I think we can tweak a few things. And so we have, um, we're doing something, uh, Kingsley and Stephanie and I, and I believe Marlo Pageant, but the four of us are, are doing something that we're calling classroom audits. Starting this, this, and it's really classroom arrangement audits. And so we will be going out, um, we've each been assigned, I believe, five buildings, and so we will be going out and kind of dip-sticking classrooms and, and walking through and looking at, you know, ten to fifteen classrooms, kind of randomly picking them and then taking pictures of the room arrangements, and is there something we could do better to make sure that we're socially distancing? It's really a pretty big commitment of time, but it's really the right work, so. Um, and that, and then we'll, you know, we'll come back to the committees, we'll look at that, we'll look at our Return to Learn Plan, is there something we need to modify? Maybe we haven't communicated well enough, where, you know, or maybe we just need to hear what, you know, the teachers are saying about this works and this didn't work. And so um, now that we've got a few weeks in our belt, those are just those next steps. So I just, I really, really want to thank everybody who has, you know, not only had a, a say in the plan before it was written or during, while it was being written, but also the people who are working so hard to make sure we're keeping our kids safe. So, um, just a note about enrollment, I did put something in the weekly update. We are really gearing up to look at two groups. We're looking at our in-person students and making sure that we've got all of them enrolled and, and that they're here. We are missing a few kids that we're, you know, continuing to call and making sure that we get them in school. Um, and then for our virtual students, we are keeping tabs, you know, the public might be interested to know that we, because we're, we're, um, the online is truly an online software that we're using, we can keep track of exactly how many kids log in, when, how often, how long. Um, so we have really good records and, and, um, Dr. Mohorn is, is taking a lead, her department is taking a lead on that virtual. So it's, it's, it's a lot of work and there's a lot of newness to it. But, um, we're learning a lot. Uh, we started this morning working on kind of re-honing, uh, our strategic plan and really looking at what parts of our strategic plan really need to be lifted up right now. Um, to get us through this, we, we call it surviving and thriving, um, through this COVID year. And so uh, one of the things that was brought up, even just at our meeting today, somebody was talking about the fact that we really need to be measuring and monitoring how things are going right now, because some of the things we're doing right now will become status quo for the way that we go forward. There's certain things that we've been pushed into, but they actually are going to be better. And so we're measuring and monitoring and saying, you know, this might be the, you know, life has changed in education probably forever. And so we need to be really tracking what's going on. So those are some of the things going on. And then I will, um, you know, I, I appreciate the questions about policy process, and so I'll try to put something in the weekly update, but just maybe to kind of the, that process, um, there's like a, a four-step process to bringing policies to you. As you guys know, the board is our policy, you are executive, or you're the legislative branch, right? You are, you are creating policy for us. So when a need for a policy is expressed or the policy is up on its timeline, that's how things come before you. So that expression of needing to look at it could become, it could come from our community. It could come from a, a staff member, it could come from a principal who says, have we looked at that policy? It really doesn't reflect what we do or what we should be doing anymore. Um, so that, that need can come forward in a variety of ways. And then after it does that, we look at the department who, um, who kind of owns that policy. So if it's about student services, then we bring it back to student services, and then the administration in charge of that would take, they would be the second branch, so they would kind of look at that and they would make recommendations that come forward to the policy review, which is kind of that third step. Policy review looks at it, and sometimes that is a back-and-forth process. Sometimes the policy review, um, you know, thinks we'll take this back and look at that. We don't really feel like we could bring that forward. So it kind of goes back and forth. Sometimes it's a no-change recommendation because it's only being brought forward because the time is expiring on it. So once it does that, and then it comes to you guys for two readings. So I, I just thought that might be interesting to just recap that. So I, I, when your question was, um, you know, why can it come forward? I thought that's, that's a good question. It can come forward for a lot of reasons, one of which is because it's time to do that. And the others are, you know, we have all kinds of things that we look at and we said, that, that just, that policy doesn't fit anymore. So, anyway, I just thought I would mention that too, so thank you.
Question Jane with here. As far as the online, how is it looking? Like you said, you can tell exactly who's logging on, and so how is the attendance of online going?
So we are still working on that. Um, actually, we, we're getting better at all kinds of things. And so at one point in time, Dr. Mohorn actually had a list of everything, and she was, you know, starting to highlight, and then we found out that we can download it and convert it over to a spreadsheet, so we've got all of that, so we can really slice and dice the di- the data. And so we're looking at that. We do have, we do have students who have not logged on yet. So we are making personal one-on-one phone calls, emails, texts, whatever we need to do. Um, and offering, you know, in some cases, walking them through that, you know, are you sitting in front of your computer? Okay, look at the upper left-hand corner, click here. And just walking people through it because it can be overwhelming. It's a new system. We're using edgenuity and, you know, a lot of peo- a lot of our students have never used it before, and so it can be overwhelming. And so we're really trying to do what we call customer, great customer service and walking people through it. So I know Stephanie, I don't know if there's anything you would want to add on that. I don't want to leave anything out, but I know she was just talking about, um, they're really digging into, to that now that kids should have logged in by now. They really should have logged in. We have a lot of kids.
Construction already, and
That's right.
So at what point do we have our internet truancy people?
Well, and they're, you're right, and the law has the, the governor's proclamation and House file, I can't think of the number right now, but, um, twenty-nine-ten or what it is, that that has been very clear that whether you are a virtual student or an in-person student, you are a student. And so the truancy rules would apply. And so um, of course, we're trying to give the benefit of the doubt. And really, I think a lot of the people who haven't logged in is really because they've maybe had questions, and we want to make sure that they're getting their questions answered. The teachers who are leading virtual, I, I think to say that they are getting hundreds of emails every day would not be out of line. So they are working really hard just to get answers back to people. I, you know, I tried this, it didn't work, now what? Um, so we've got other people we're putting on that to make sure that we're getting, you know, we have reasonable amount of time, you know, you shouldn't email us and we shouldn't, you know, it shouldn't be days before you hear from us. It should be that day, within twenty-four hours. So we're working really hard on that. So, um, I think there's, I think there's a variety of reasons why people may not have logged in. Um, so, you know, we're working through those, those questions, you know, we've got.
And people call if, if they, yeah, like the chain, like, okay.
There's a variety of things they could do. Probably the very best thing they can do is, um, you, they could email virtual@waterloo schools.org, which is the website for that. Um, all of the, the, the kids have been assigned to a teacher, so they would have gotten an email from their teacher. So if they, you know, maybe they missed that, so then go with the virtual, or they could call their school. You know, they're still, if they were at Becker, they're still a Becker student. They could call their principal just like they did when they were learning in-person. And they can, they can walk that through and they can get them connected, um, they can even transfer, you know, I mean, the person can stay on the line, stay on the line, I'm going to transfer you to somebody who can help you. So um, probably any of the channels that they used prior to virtual, they can still use, but they can also use this, the virtual@waterloo schools.org is a great way too.
That's great information, I think, because, you know, if you are a parent and you are having problems, please, please do this because it's critical, I mean, that you get your child logged on.
And I would just like to add too, because I've worked with some, as a funder in the community, I've worked with some agencies and organizations that we're reaching out as a district, not only um, to provide that IT piece, but also in native languages, et cetera, so that because the, the language barrier can sometimes be difficult, not just the language of learning a computer, but the actual language. So I, I just want to say that we're really, I feel like, reaching out on a lot of levels to get that accomplished, so.
And the ingenuity, is it in different languages?
Edgenuity.
Edgenuity.
I think.
Edgenuity is just in English right now, so, um, I don't know if we're using any translators or anything like that. I'm not, I don't believe so. Working, but as far as the direct instruction, I don't believe that that's an option.
So an ESL student would be, how would they be getting helped?
They would be getting support from their, from their ESL teacher in the building.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, but the interpreter piece sometimes goes to the parent to help, it to help get, especially for some of our younger kiddos, to get that connectivity, et cetera, going. It's, it's the parent connection to speak in the native language to say, plug it in and go to this site, and then once the student's on, the student has the support, exactly, so.
So what's the expectation of the, the Waterloo District virtual teacher in terms of contact uh, frequency and duration with each of the virtual students?
Do you want to come up to the podium? Yeah. We actually worked really hard to hone in exactly because that's, we wanted to make sure there was some consistency, so there are some guidelines for a virtual teacher, so.
As far as contact goes, for our elementary, um, they are required to make contact every two weeks. Now, it could be sooner, but at least every two weeks, um, with their students. And you'll have to note, they have many more students. Some have seventy-five, eighty, some have a hundred or more students. So that, so every ten days, they have to, have to make contact. And it can be sooner. If parents are contacting sooner, then that's okay too. With our middle and high school, it's every three weeks that they have to make, um, a contact. But again, we have virtual teachers who are assigned one hundred or two hundred kids. Um, all of them have over a hundred students, some have two hundred students. And so making a contact, making contacts with parents is important, but they're also, I have one teacher who said, I came to work the other day and I had eight hundred emails just from the day before that I needed to respond to. And so they're still working to balance that, contacting parents because that's super, super important, contacting students because students reach out as well, and answering the emails within the twenty-four hours, which was one of the, the expectations that we set up too, so that we don't have a parent sitting at home waiting if it's a, I can't get on, what do I do next, where they have to wait for days.
So when you say contact, do you mean like, um, a Zoom contact?
It's a Google Meet. Yep, they use Google. Yep.
So they may have divided them, so they may have, you know, they may have fifteen login on Monday and meet with them from nine to ten to have a conversation with them, and then they might be, because their instruction is coming from the edgenuity. So their lessons are going through, and so the teachers, so they may email them, they will get feedback from edgenuity, they can log in and get support from a teacher on edgenuity, they can click on the link and watch a lesson being taught. So they're getting a lot of support. So this is somebody just checking with them and saying, Aster, you're, you're, you're signed up, let me just check with you, how's it going? I noticed that you're, you know, you've only logged in one time, so those kind of, those kind of conversations are happening, so.
That seems like extraordinarily long time between required contacts. Is this consistent with what other districts are doing? You know, I'm, I'm familiar with one other district, and it's daily.
And our teachers, I mean, we, there's absolutely no way if you have two hundred and I think it's seven kids on your roster that you could do a, a Zoom with them every day.
No, but that becomes a staffing issue.
Right. I was just going to ask, is, are we not, are we not going to try to staff?
We have been trying to staff. Kingsley can tell you, I bother him probably all day, every day with, I mean, that, we talk about virtual staffing every single day. I mean, that is something that we work on every single day.
But is that our plan?
We have, everybody who wanted to was moved to virtual and more. So teachers who did not want to teach virtual are also teaching virtual.
Yep.
So, um, Kingsley, I don't know if you have anything you want to add there. He's sitting there. Is there anything?
I think this is a longer conversation just because of the fact that, you know, it's getting personal students currently in our buildings as well, and we set a priority as far as adding twenty at the elementary and keeping our class size as low, and so the board is asking for kind of what is asking as far as what people would like as part of our side, and if it is a staffing conversation that goes more along with.
Yeah. And we're monitoring. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna see how it goes and, and, um, you know, check into that, so.
So how are we monitoring the student performance to know whether or not they're really learning anything in those ten days?
Right.
That we don't contact them.
So they can, I mean, we can see it, we can see every single day how a student is doing, because that data's in there, so they're progressing through the system, they're taking, there's formative assessments, there's summative assessments all through the way. So you can, I can do that right now. And the, the principals can look at that too. So if I'm at, again, I'll use Becker, starts with a B, so I use them quite often. Um, so if I'm at Becker, I can log in and see my virtual kids, I can take a look at them, I could, I mean, you can, you can see at a moment's notice exactly who's working, what they're doing, how they're doing, um, if they passed a fractions test, you can see all of that, so.
And so can our instructional coaches now.
Yep.
So that they are able to work with the teachers. If they're looking at, and say, hey, I'm seeing a group of twelve kids that are all struggling with ABC, here are some ideas that I have for you. So our instructional coaches just got trained.
And I, I think, I think our staffing for virtual might be lower than many different districts. So
Yeah, it is.
If, if, if you're using a system where the content is provided online, now, many, my, I was just telling them, my sister-in-law's teaching in a district where she has to te- she's doing both. So she has her in-person kids and then she teaches all her virtual kids. And we committed to not having teachers do both of that, so we've really divided. Um, and I have, there are some districts, I believe, where they are doing like a live stream where they're, where they're doing that. So there, there's a variety of models out there. I think for the districts that have chosen to do a, to use a software where it is an online teaching system, um, I think some of them staffed even higher than that. And not all of ours are that high. There's a couple of exceptions where it is a little bit higher, but, you know, we tried to staff, you know, eighty or a hundred if we can do that.
If we could.
So that, that's actually pretty doable if you're just checking in with them, even every week.
So what's the date, what's the official date when they can switch?
It, well, it was Friday was the.
No, I'm sorry. The trimester's over.
Oh.
What's that date?
November seventeenth, I want to say.
Sixty days in.
That's, yep, let's, let's trimester.
India, that's such a good question. So we can share too, that we have, we've, you know, we have been allowing additional, we, originally, that was in our Return to Learn Plan that we were asking people to commit. But we have had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people who have opted to switch one way or the other, and we went ahead and allowed that to not make people wait until. So that's why I kind of, I was like, eh, I get that, that question is the right question. We ended up really not doing that. We ended up, um, having that, having additional, like, we'll freeze it for a while. We say for two weeks, we're going to just gather, like, you can file your application, but we're not going to make any switches until September twenty-first. I think that's the next one. So September twenty-first, we will go ahead and make some switches because we don't want to make people wait if they know it is not working. Unfortunately, the flexibility on our part has kind of been tricky sometimes because we've had, we've had families that have requested, um, three or four switches back and forth.
Already.
They started with in-person, then they went to virtual, then they went back to in-person, and then they're, now they're back on the waiting list again. So we have families who have been on the waiting list four different times to go back and forth. So we're asking people not to do that, and so we are making a decision that if you are requesting that many times, we're just going to freeze you for right now. You just have to hold tight, so.
And, and honestly, that's part of the reason the staffing has been so difficult because. And, and honestly, that's part of the reason the staffing has been so difficult, because we did not start at the numbers that we have right now. The number, and we've really been trying to, trying to be as flexible as we can with families, but then our numbers just skyrocket, and then that, that becomes a staffing issue.
So if people request to go. Um, it's, it's not a lot more, but it is a few, I mean, I think in, as those times when we let people in, I do, I do think it was um, like, the first time it was more people wanted to come back in than those who wanted to move to virtual, but then it switched. And so it's, there's, there's a few more in there, and it really depends on like a grade level. If we only have, let's say that we had at one grade level, we had two teachers teaching the hundred and, you know, a hundred and twenty kids, so then there's sixty per teacher. I'm just giving this as an example. Then at the next switch, there happened to be thirty more who wanted to come over. Well, we didn't have another teacher, so we add them to the, to existing teachers. And instead of saying, okay, we're, now we're on September fourteenth or September twenty-fourth, I know you've been teaching kids in your room, but now we're gonna pull you out of there, and then all of those kids have to be split up, the in-person kids have to go somewhere else. We try to not mess with the teachers who are already.
Providing in-person instruction.
Roster of kids.
We don't wanna, we're not try, we're not trying to sacrifice anybody, but we don't wanna have the detriment to one for the other. So we're really trying to balance as best we can right now.
Offer you flexibility causes an issue over here, and so we're.
It, it ha, it has.
There are a lot of pieces to this puzzle, and we're still trying to figure it out. So I, and we do meet, um, I think Ryan Christopher has been really instrumental in working with our virtual teachers and doing some of the PD, and so he does meet with them for a while, he was meeting with them every day, what are you finding, what are you, you know, how are you doing? Right now, the, the hardest part, I would, well, maybe not the hardest, but one of the most difficult parts is really keeping up with the emails from parents. Right now, it is, like, like the example, you know, to come, come in one morning, and then you have eight hundred emails, you're just, it's new, it's really new for a lot of people, and we don't fault parents for asking questions, that's exactly what they should be doing. But we also know that we're gonna have to put some more staff behind supporting this new virtual learning that people don't have their minds wrapped around.
So just, I, I'm just a comment off whiles, I think on secondary, I think two weeks is probably better than three on check-ins personally. Just my opinion, and maybe suggestion is on ingenuity, edgenuity part of it is maybe perhaps doing a workshop for the board, let's try it out or something, and see how the stats kind of roll up. That way, you know, we know what this program is, not just overall from virtual, you know, so.
Now, if I, I guess, just playing a role. If I um talk to a virtual teacher, would they say that it's effective teaching?
I would say nothing's effective as face-to-face. But we try to do the best we can with, with a hundred percent virtual, but we know face-to-face is what's.
The best.
What's the best. And so if you're not face-to-face, it's not going to be the best, but we've used this program, this program has really done well for our students. This isn't a brand new, it's only brand new at elementary, um, but we've been using that, as Jane said, at, at Expo for, for years. So we're just, we just.
And actually somewhat at the middle schools, didn't we?
Yeah, we did a little piloting, trying to do, trying to give kids some other options to, to be successful. So we had been piloting some things at middle school as well.
Um, you know, Kingsley had said, you know, we're, what we wanna prioritize as far as staffing, and, and I, I understand where that's at right now. But fiscally, are we in a place where we can keep trying to hire new hires to handle some of this? And what was, what would be your goal as far as how many students per virtual teacher?
I guess it depends, we really need to get past these first few weeks, because right now, it's a lot of logistics. The things and the questions and the, the inund, how the teachers are inundated, I don't anticipate they will be come the beginning of October. A lot of the things are, we tried to push next, and next wouldn't come on the, you know, so different things. Yeah, it is, right. I would say the vast majority are technical.
Well, you have, you have two different things going on here. One, we're getting up, we're on program, and we're still trying to get everybody back accounted for at the same time. So I mean, you've got a couple moving pieces that are kinda, you know, cause you bring a new person, the group in, and they wanna do virtual, now you got, they're, they're further down the learning curve of that software.
Do we have our IT department though, could they dedicate staff to?
They are supporting us immensely.
I guess I would, I would welcome a, a report early October sometime that says, okay, particularly on the virtual. These fifty percent of the kids are doing perfectly well, and they can stay with eighty or a hundred per. But the next ten percent need, need a little more help, and then at the lowest level, uh, maybe there's a, a whole nother plan for them, because they're just not, they're just not doing well, so. Seems like we need to analyze in a timely manner, and then differentiate as fast as we can, and then uh, propose at least, whether the budget supports it or not, becomes a secondary question. But at least propose what we really need to do to take care of those kids that are virtual and not, and not really, uh, you know, one size fits all, probably doesn't, doesn't work in a virtual world.
And I think a very important part too is that this is not voluntary still yet, for a kid may haven't figured that out yet, you know. If they're not progressing, they're not progressing towards their, completing their class for their next grade, or the POM or whatever, you know.
Yeah, definitely, analysis is, I mean, that's why we started with the data today, because we've got it, you know, a couple weeks, and they didn't start until the thirty-first, so they've got a couple, you know, one fewer week than, um, so they've been in, they've been in it for two weeks, and we're, you know, we're starting to get some data out of there that will drive our next decision, so we agree, yeah. And there might be things that we can learn from the virtual setting that will, will take into, you know, snow days or next year, or, you know, we're really trying to be savvy.
Larger sample size to know, does it work, how's it work for Expo and everything, when you scale it back into.
Right, but we need to get everybody logged in and understanding the system, and once they get humming along, we, we, you know, we think, we agree. We think quite a few parents will, or kids will do really well on the system, but right now, a lot of the questions are technical.
So every student who needs um a hotspot or any technology, are they pretty much all covered?
We are good on that, we are, I mean, there's still a few that we're working to, we have plans for all of them. So once in a while, when we're, as we're making these phone calls, a parent will say, I didn't, I don't have web access. And we're like, well, that's a problem, so let's get you hooked up, so we're doing that, I mean, we are prepared for that. We just need to make sure that we make that contact with every single person. So, you know, again, anybody who's watching, if, if you have a, a student who's virtual and you don't have internet, we need, we need to, you know, it was a question on the virtual application, and so if they marked it, yes, I have adequate, you know, and then they, now they don't, then we need to know that.
Yeah, they need to reach out, because we can get it to them the same day.
And it could have changed since the time they had, yeah, very well.
But we wouldn't know if they didn't let us know, because we went off of that to really contact parents and say, you, you indicated you don't have internet. We can get you a hotspot, literally when you come and pick your Chromebook up, or they set up times to come pick up hotspots. So our IT department has been on it with, you need a hotspot, we can get you one today.
Well, and if you don't have internet or a phone, come right here to this building between eight and four-thirty, Monday through Friday.
I'm sorry, bouncing off Jesse's, um, some things that I, I really liked hearing is, is parents who are super invested in it, and you know, um, they're working three hours a day with their child together, where it's almost like homeschooling with all this, you know, um. Yeah, so I think it would be great if we were able to have some of those parents come in and just tell us what is helping them be successful, so that we can share that as well.
I think that is part of the plan to survey parents, to ask them, what's working well, what's not working well. Um, a lot of times, I mean, we may have to do additional to just survey though, because a lot of times, the people who will reply are, you know, that, they may say, oh, you know, this is working really well, or there might be on either end of, I'm really satisfied or I'm not satisfied at all. And so um, sometimes you have to reach out to, you know, a sample set and just find out what they, what they say. So yeah, we need feedback from them, we need feedback from the kids too, so.
And question, um, someone asked me, and I did not know the answer, do we allow our virtual students to participate in sports and activities?
Yeah, they can, they can participate in things after the school day, many of them aren't, because they chose to not be in school, because they didn't wanna be in school, but they, they can. So what, the only place we have really limited that is, is not having them come in and out of the school day. So if they say, well, I wanna go virtual, but I do wanna come in for math, or I wanna come in, you know, that's really hard to do. So um, right now, we, to say we have our hands full with this, the new way of doing things is, is really an understatement. So we're really trying to kinda hold true to either your virtual or your in-person, but we are allowing the.
And I will say, thank you for that, I know a lot of districts don't have that option, but it is amazing to be able to have that connection. And you know, a lot of made that point, just, you know, virtual student be able to still have after-school activities. So it has been amazing since our middle school started last week, and just to see those, you know, friends and kids that they've been online, they have really appreciated it, so to be able to have that option, it's great.
Well, that's all part of that social emotional piece.
Yes, absolutely, it's amazing.
And which is why we've tried to be as flexible as we can, I mean, we really, really have.
On a, being a group project or whatever that is.
I think you've been great, seriously, like, as a parent, as listening to community, I.
We've tried, I know everything hasn't been rainbows and unicorns, but we have, I mean, we have really tried, we've tried as hard as we could.
It is much better than I thought it would be, so, and I had high expectations, so, yep.
But I, I do wonder, so, I don't know if anyone here has a student that is, um, cause I don't have any students in the district right now, but that is doing virtual yet coming for after-school. So what, where, I guess for me thinking from the outside, how is it safer to come after-school than it is during school? That, that would be my question.
It, well, that, that, that seems a question that they took virtual, just because it was a COVID concern, or they just liked the idea of, they wanted to do virtual for some other reason, you know.
As an outsider in the community, I'm thinking, okay, if the student doesn't want to be part of a mass number or germs in the building, or the potential of picking up germs in the building, or the uncleanliness of the building, yet then it's okay when it's after-school and smaller numbers. I, I, I just, I just.
Do we know if that's the case or not?
I would say it's.
Do we have numbers?
Of people that are coming.
That are virtual, but still do after-school activity.
I think a lot of people are not doing that, they've chosen virtual and they're staying true to the virtual, but I do think there are some that are coming in.
Only a handful that I know about, there may be more, but.
There are a few.
And they're all at the high school level, that I, just that I know about, but I'm sure there are others.
But I think we've, we've read in the paper that there are, there are districts that are pushing the, or a, pushing virtual all day, but then they wanted to still run their sports, and so that's kind of that same question, and so, you know, we're just, we're just trying, we're just, we're finding our way.
Is the reason why they chose virtual, if you give somebody an option.
And there may just, lots of different.
Well, yeah, but like, think about if they just do marching band, you're not close to anybody, like, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna be touching them, so. No, they, my daughter plays trumpet, they have cloth over the edge of it, so no, they're not throwing spit.
The bell covers.
No, they've got a good policy for that too. All right, thank you, Dr. Moore, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on, since all of us have been talking, I'm gonna go ahead and start down to my left with India tonight with board comments. No, no, I'm just, no, I.
I'm scratching out all my questions.
I wanna let people have their time, so.
Uh, I think I'm just gonna end and say thank you for the media staff being able to stream the football games, that has been a really great option. Um, I don't know what that's gonna look like with like the other sports, but, you know, I really appreciate that, you know, getting that available to um, those who still wanna watch the game, but they just wanna sit out, sit at home and watch it. So I, thank you for that option and working on that, so good job, media specialists doing that, that's it.
And I talked to um Dan Huff, our athletic person for the district, um, the other day at a swim meet, and he talked about, we have some technology that's coming, hopefully with, maybe to use for volleyball, maybe even for basketball, that'll be a camera that, it's not gonna, we may not be able to Facebook Live them all, but to try to use technology in a better way, we don't have our own, you know, television station or anything like that, but that we can work toward that.
It would be nice to have the city.
I know.
Space to be able to just say.
Maybe the career center, all right, let's, there you go, okay, good, good idea. Yeah, they did that.
So kudos to that. Since you did speak to Dan Huff, do you know how the middle school situation's gonna work with their games?
I don't, I didn't ask him about that.
I, I know they're playing within Waterloo for football.
Okay, so they're not, okay.
But can parents or spectators come in, or do they buy tickets, or?
I'm guessing it'll be a, I'm guessing there's, that that's TBD.
They just started practice this week, so we're still ways down on games.
Oh, you got it.
This Friday, we will be doing a live Facebook interview with Lori Netti and Mike Landers to detail all of the above.
Sweet, Friday, all right, thank you.
One other question, um, conferences?
That, that'll be announced shortly, so we're working on that.
Thank you, I'm done.
Are you, are your doodles done, are we?
I am finished.
All right, Jesse?
Uh, I wanna do two thank yous and just a, a comment. Uh, one, uh, I know last week has hacked it, but uh, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Mr. Huff was involved, but Dr. Pappas and his job to get, get a football game on a Friday night that changed, and changed, and changed, but it was fantastic. And uh, a thank you to the, the, the people and animals at high school for coming up and playing a game, you know, and it was, anybody there, it was actually a pretty good game for most of the game there. I think at least one record set, uh, and just a comment, uh, that if you go back a few years ago, we wouldn't have played that game regardless, because the field condition had been so horrible and it pouring down rain, but that, they were able to play through pretty much a very big downpour and just kept going, so, and I think the kids will, you know, with everything going on, is, that is not normal this year for them, but they probably take a, a positive foundation of that experience.
I quite remember that one.
Yeah, so considering it was a ninety-nine yard touchdown pass and that, so that was, that's pretty amazing, so. But anyway, so again, the, thinking to the ADs, Dr. Pappas, particularly, I know he probably was on the phone a lot that week, and to pull that, they still pulled something off was fantastic, so.
Well, and I guess I am mirroring what um my two cohorts here said, but I just, I really appreciate the great efforts that our staff is making to try to make it as normal as possible, like the senior nights activities. Cause we had a lot of seniors last spring that really got missed out on their last activities, and the, the homecomings, and you know, getting those in, and the scene, the senior nights, and recognizing these kids, because we don't know what's gonna, the future's gonna hold. And um, um, along those lines, just wondering, I had some public ask me, and, and I have not been able to get tickets to any event, because, you know, you have to get them from the athlete or whatever, so is there any way that, like, let's say, we're playing Cedar Rapids Kennedy, and we know they're only going to use forty of their allotted eighty tickets, or wristbands? It, would there be any way that we could have a will-call window or something? I mean, yeah, I mean, I know that's.
I can pass that along, yeah.
But I mean, I'm just saying that that's, that, because I would like to go to some of them, but I don't really know a football player, will you give me one of your wristbands?
You might have to sit on the other side.
Right, that'd be okay, but, but so, I mean, just, and I've had a couple of community people ask me, you know, I go to every event typically, and I just like to go at least to a football game or something, so.
I have a freshman and a senior, so we get a lot, so if you need one, let me know.
Ooh, okay, there's my end, all right, thank you, Stacy, but, so just all the efforts that have been made, and the staff, like having a hundred kids in a virtual class, that's hard, that's really hard. But just that we're all taking this for the team, and, and I just am glad that our students are back in class and can have a little bit of normalcy if they have so chosen that, so, thank you.
Thanks, Sue, Aster.
I'll piggyback off uh what has been said already, um, as I looked around the state this weekend, um, been following Twitter, and just the conversations that have been had about um, different districts not being able to participate um in sports or athletics, just because of um going virtual or having started and not being in person. Um, so I think our district um deserves a lot of credit, the, the leadership uh, for putting us in position to at least, I mean, I know we had to fight to get a game uh this weekend, but just the opportunity to do that um wouldn't have been there if um those uh procedures and policies wasn't in place to go virtual, uh, or go in-person and not just virtual. So uh, kudos to the staff, uh, the district leadership team, uh, for.
So, uh, kudos to the staff, uh, the district leadership team, uh, for putting us in a position to, uh, have these young people be able to participate in athletics and extracurricular activities as well. So.
Stacy?
Um, I just had one, well, two things, but first just a clarification from Dr. Lindemann. So, the email that my daughter got, who's a senior in band, was that they were only allowed three wristbands for the football game, but the senior football players got four. And it said in your update that seniors were to get four. So, is that just for football or is it for our cheerleaders, our dance, like, like why wouldn't it apply to those?
I don't know.
Kids as well?
Um, I'll have to ask on that one. I don't have that answer right here.
Okay.
It may just be because I think we got four.
I don't know.
But have you had, have you got true?
Yep.
I think we got.
Um, band did not.
Yeah. I'll just have to check on that, Stacy. I'm not sure.
Have you had band senior night yet?
No.
Maybe you get four for that.
Four for senior night.
Yeah. I know we did for senior night for like when it's senior night, but I don't, I don't know. I'll just have to ask on that and get back with you.
Okay. Well, because it was like the football homecoming game, but that's homecoming for everybody then as well. So, that's, I mean, I know band didn't get to do much, but.
No, I don't think they had it. There were only a handful of kids in the band that seemed there.
Mine were, I had one.
Raining.
The seniors got four tickets if they were in o- other events, but band seniors did not. And that was from Dr. Pappas. That he, he told, he's passed it down.
I don't know.
I was just hoping that before we're done, just, you know, so that.
It should be consistent, whatever it is. Yep.
Yes. Well, you want.
Senior night, you should get four because you might have a grandparent.
That's what I mean. Yeah, grandpa, if it's not pouring, they wanna come see. Um, and then I just had a couple of little questions about the return to learn plan. So, the screen guards in the high school, is that just something we're not gonna do then? I thought that the plan had been that we are gonna do the screen, the sneeze guards for all grade levels. That that was gonna just be part of what we were doing. That's what we purchased, right? Was it enough for the?
But you didn't leave things like.
I actually.
I did order my salad from your pie. So, it's seven oh, seven oh six is the pickup. Just letting you know. Um, so. Yeah. So, what was the question? And I'm sorry, I just totally got my food comment.
About the sneeze, the sneeze guards that are not being used in the high school. Why?
The desk shields.
Desk shields, yeah.
Why is that not something that's happening from K through twelve, which was what I had thought that we purchased them for?
So, at the high school, we had a lot of conversation around, you know, the feasibility of them walking around with it and whether or not they were gonna use it and, and many different of those type of things. And so, it, it has been offered. It's been offered multiple times.
Well, now I have a senior and a freshman and neither of them have heard this. I talked to Jane about it and I was told that they were offered it. Neither of them have heard it. And I can see if one of them, you know, airheaded it out, but they both wouldn't. And the communication came that it sometimes is done through announcements. There's teachers who don't turn on the announcements. And then also that it came through the screens. If they're walking in the hallway and they stop to read those, they are told they need to keep moving. And in lunch, if you're not facing it, you're not reading that and you don't have much time to eat either. So, no, they were not told that they could come get it. And there's no kids using them. Zero. I want mine to use it, but they're gonna look ridiculous.
But let me just say, I was outside the first day, I believe, at West and there's kids just walking by the administration that was there to take desk shields and masks. And so, I understand that it may not have been communicated exactly the way that you may have wanted to, but as far as getting done, I was there. I mean, I s- I sat there with Andy.
So, every child walked past and saw them?
Uh, I sat there with Andy and literally saw kids walk by. And so, they had a, Ally Hildeman, I believe, had a, or Assistant President Hildeman, had a computer up that she was taking as far as people that would stop then and say, hey, I'm interested in this and from, from that standpoint. And so, if you're requesting for us to maybe send an email out or do additional communication, then we can do that. I mean, I think that there were, we just have to follow up with your individual classes as kids as well, because Andy said that was going through the teachers. And so, if they didn't do something, we need to follow up and make sure that was not done. And we would hold everybody accountable.
Um, then the other question is, so, we had talked about that they would be left every night and then they would be cleaned and given back, which I know was gonna be a headache, but it was something that we were going to do. So, when you're in a high school class right now, you do not take your, you don't take your mask off all day. Their masks are on all day until lunch. And then they're sitting four at a round table with, they have to take their mask off to eat. Whereas if they had the guards, they could have those around them and they could take their mask and speak to one another. And then they could also do like our K through eight, which is have the ability to have their mask off during class.
Okay. What is your, what's the question?
If we had the sneeze guards in place for every student in high school, was that not the plan? Did I miss something? Wasn't that what we had decided?
I don't necessarily know if it was decided across the board. I think we wanted to make sure we had them available. We knew for a fact that we wanted to definitely have them at elementary. And then middle school specifically wanted them as well. I mean, just in general, based on the feedback we got, we got considerable feedback from high school, our high school principals and administrators and even teachers around, you know, the feasibility of having the desk shields. Yes, we wanted to make them available, but I, I, I hope that you're not saying that we should have not listened to our, our building principals and our teachers as far as the feasibility of using the desk shields. I don't think I'm hearing that. I just wanna make sure that.
No, no.
We wanna make sure we're hearing feedback and valuing people's feedback, because I think at times you hear it on the other end where we're not doing that enough. And so, we truly took that into account. And now I hear you're saying that that's maybe not necessarily what we should have done. And so, if there needs to be a change, I don't necessarily know that we could account for it right here, right now.
What I'm saying is that was not communicated to us.
We paid them, we paid for them and they're available. We're just not using them.
Right.
Which is what we kind of voted about for, the fact that we paid for them and we should be using them. I think that's where she's kinda going with that.
Right. And I, I don't remember being told that we were in a board meeting. I wa- don't remember us saying, no, we're not gonna use them in the high schools. And that they would only be offered. I know that we said that when we were waiting for the next shipment, right? But then when we were wait, because they came in on a Sunday night, but those were not the ones for the high school. Those were K eight. And we were told that there would be enough extra that if you were in high school, you could request one, right? That's the conversation.
That's correct.
That I heard. But then more came in, correct?
Didn't can request one.
That's what, and that's what's happened. I guess that's why I'm confused about.
The presumpt-
But why is, why is it?
The presumption when we bought them, I think, was everyone would use them. Now, I'm hearing that they're really optional. It's a student option to use them or not. Is that, is that our current policy?
Yeah. I think what I was trying to say was that there was, we, we definitely wanted to have them available. We got significant pushback at the high school level as far as utilizing and their effectiveness of using them, you know, as they moved around the building. If the board is telling us that we want to state that they have to require them, that's your, that's your prerogative to make.
I think the question is, what is the current policy? They're available for every student. No student needs to use them if they don't want to. Is that the policy?
At K eight, they are using them.
Because they stay with them.
Consistently. Right. Yep. Right. And.
Use them, you mean every student?
Every student. So, yep. And so, we changed the schedule at the middle school where they start back at their, at the end of the day. They go back to their first period class again so that they could leave them there. Um, and so, they stay there. And so, at the high school, and I think what I'm hearing is that you want us to revisit that policy at the high school.
Well, it's not revisiting.
Just asking.
Oh, yeah. I mean, or maybe I'm hearing.
It was never discussed.
The presumption was.
Well, the board didn't vote on the, the return to learn plan is not a board voted thing. So, that wasn't, that wasn't, um, I mean, that wasn't something that the board voted on. So.
But didn't, didn't we, weren't we asked for the money though to purchase the sneeze guard?
Yeah.
Purchase them. Yeah.
Yeah. And so, if they're not being used as we were told, then isn't that an issue?
I'm confused by the.
I don't necessarily have a problem.
Do you have the time, the timeframe for when we spent the money to purchase them to when we went A B step? Were, were they not utilized because of the students are in the class?
That was one of the concerns.
Can you hear my? Hey, Aster, can you turn your mic on? Thank you. Jason.
I forget.
That, yeah.
Right.
That's one class out of her day though.
Right. I understand in those situations, I mean, they would, they just face that point. They wouldn't need the mask. And you got, uh, which is.
But they're still wearing.
All right. I don't have a problem buying enough that everyone can have them if they want one. But, and I don't think they necessarily need to use them, but there needs to be a clear policy.
Just a clarification on.
Of when, you know, and if, and under what circumstances they're required and under what circumstances they're optional, as well as what combination of face mask and social distancing and those, those all three come into play. So, I think it's just a, a question of what, a clarification of, we have all the, the equipment we need. We don't need, in my mind, my opinion, to use it all at once or all at all, you know? But I think we need, what we're asking for here is what, after two weeks or three weeks of experience now, what is being recommended by the high schools and what's being executed?
I, I, I don't wanna sound redundant, so I think that's what I just shared. And so, I think Jane's comment was to say, if there needs to be a different direction, we just need to know.
Well, what, what was the?
Eight, eight, they are using them.
Right.
Everywhere.
Yes.
At nine through twelve, they are available for use.
What was the, and I guess I didn't hear what the, the response then from teachers and administrators in high school was? Why they felt that it wasn't going to be workable? I mean, I'm not dismissing it. I didn't know what their reasoning was for why they didn't feel having the sneeze guards would work.
I, I thought I just said that, but maybe I didn't. And so, I, I talked about the feasibility of going from classroom to classroom. There was discussions.
They have handles though. Right.
I, I'm telling you what the concern is. I'm not saying that there wasn't a disagreement.
I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm just quite patient.
Yeah. I mean, uh, because we, I was one of the, the, one of the few districts that we really wanted the desk shields. And so, you're not gonna get an argument from me as far as a use. I'm just saying we listened to feedback.
Okay.
And so, there was a feasibility of going from classroom to classroom. Was it technically their own or do they wanna use more the middle school model of leaving them in the classroom and then getting them cleaned? And then having them hand a new, um, particular desk shield as well? There was concern about, I think Jesse just mentioned as well, you know, the fact that we were going A B schedule changed tremendously the requirement around the desk shield, because as you know, and maybe, maybe you don't, that we did K through eight require in-person and didn't do an A B schedule for K through eight. And so, because of that, the desk shield from what we heard from our teachers was paramount for them wanting to come back into, um, the building. We did not have that same concern from our teachers at the high school level. We also heard from the instructional standpoint, there was some difficulty with using the desk shields. I'm not saying we didn't hear that across the board because it was more required at K through eight, but that was a consideration that I had the high schools. I can, you know, a lot of this is coming off the noggin. I mean, I can go back and talk with our principals and make sure that I have my written down list to share with the board if that's, that's what you'd like to have as well.
So, what's the difficulty?
And can people request them to use them if they want?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So, that's, they are available.
What's the difficulty using them? They don't attach to the desk conveniently or the students just don't wanna carry them?
I think a, a lot of it was just a, a line of sight that we were talking to some of the teachers about. It was, you know, hey, I can't see. I mean, I know that the middle school level, there was a question as far as, you know, the, where they were in relation to the classroom and could they see through it or could they engage with other students that were across the classroom? I mean, those are some of the concerns. But the difference was, was because we were required in-person, that wasn't really a consideration that we wanted to even move from. At the high school level, it was a little bit different because there was a significantly less amount of students.
Significantly less though, can still be twenty kids in a room. So, then you do have to wear your mask for the entire, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to like.
Well, again, I think you're.
Oh, I just think some clarification on it, which I feel like we have now gotten. And then if there's, I mean, I.
And clarification to parents, because that was, you know, that was not, I, I don't think parents understood what was happening. And I don't think parents understand that, um, no kids have it. So, if I tell my girls.
Parents called and said, I would like one and they were denied. I mean, you're that.
I, I don't know anything. I'm just saying as a parent, I was not told as a parent until, I was told as a board member that they were optional. I was not told that as a mom.
As a mom.
And so, there's other moms and dads who don't know that, right? Because we're privy to different information. So, if I tell my girls, tomorrow you're gonna go get sneeze guards, they're gonna look at me and say, we are the only kids walking around with these things. And I feel bad for them, but I feel that, that when you have twenty kids in the class, there's no way that you can, you can't spread them apart. So, they are, they are wearing their masks the majority of the day and it's hard. It is. And I guess just to see how hard it would be to do it, I guess is just my question. Maybe have one class of kids do it and see how it goes for them to take it around all day or something. I don't know. Um.
I think what we, what we've done here is taken like a week, a week or two weeks of work in discussion with our principals and teachers and tried to have like a five to ten minute conversation. That's why I always ask if this is the case, leave it, let us know ahead of time or maybe we can have a discussion afterwards, because I hear the concern and I hear the even personal concern. I, it's difficult to address the specific concern, because I would say there are some students using it. Are the vast majority of students not using it? Yes. But I think maybe I'm not doing a good enough job articulating kind of the reasons why not and the reasons why there was a change as far as making it more optional based on some of the conversations. And I'd be more than willing to stay a little bit after, even though I know I said seven oh six, but we're past it now to talk and discuss more, because I think there's, I'm not communicating clearly on it. And I, I, again, I don't wanna, I don't want you to hear at all that we won't provide it because it's, it's there. And that's why I wanted to articulate.
Right. Right.
I was literally standing there and we had students walk by, because many of the students were just interested in like getting to school. And so, if there's additional follow-up as far as what we may have failed to communicate, because we just had this conversation today. While we may have felt we've communicated ad nauseam, it may not have been effective, just based on maybe the feeling. And then we need to get that feedback and make some changes. And so, we can do that.
I have a freshman who's about this tall. So, if she was walking in with a group of people and she's already said that she gets pushed around, she won't use the main stairwell because she's like, I get tipped over. So, she didn't see it. And if my senior didn't see it, then she was having a senior moment, I guess. But the same with the masks. They, both of them said, well, when do we get in our masks? And I was told, well, no, they already.
They have them.
They, they have them, but they have to request them.
Yeah. And that's where, again, that's where that table was like, and I'm, I'm gonna point down like.
But as a mom, I didn't know to tell my kids, you have to go to a table when you go there. That wasn't communicated to me.
I think many of the building principals took that opportunity to hand them out as people were coming into the building. And so, I, I, it, you're focusing on the high school right now, but I think some of our buildings did that same thing as students. I know that that was one of the things we did for Jump Start, where as students were walking in, we handed them their masks if they were interested. Some of them said no. Some of them said yes. I do think there may be some issues as far as maybe what we've, how we've handled high school students, because we have put a lot of ownership on them to say, hey, if you want it, come gather, instead of saying, you know, here you go. We, I, I definitely don't think we did that. I wasn't, when I was standing there, it wasn't like as people were walking up, here you go, here you go.
When you're dealing with fourteen-year-olds who've just come out of middle school, they're not quite ready sometimes to know.
Well, so maybe a, a general review and a.
Absolutely.
I'm sure we can put something out to our high school parents and our kids.
Humor me just a little bit, because I'm not clear at all after this discussion. So, I sit down in my math class and, uh, I'm a sophomore in, uh, tenth grade, God forbid. But, uh, so now, is it up to the student to decide, hey, I'm gonna put my shield on and then I don't need a mask and I don't need a shield? Or I'm not gonna put on my screen guard, but then I do need a mask, but not a shield? Or I need a mask and that's good enough for everything? Is it, is it up to the individual student and all these or? And there's several questions there. Or is it the teacher that says, okay, we only have six kids in the class. Social spacing's gonna do it. Nobody needs anything.
Well, yeah. So.
I don't have one. They can't put one on though.
Well, but assume that they all have access to, to everything. I'm still not clear on the, on who decides in each individual situation? Is it the students themselves get to choose? Is it the teacher that says, based on this setting, social distancing is fine? Or we have twenty kids in a class, so now you all have to wear masks? Or you have the choice of wearing a mask or putting a screen guard? That's what, that's what I don't understand.
I won't be able to answer all elements, but I guess, I guess I'll start with this. And I think I really, I mean, if the board, if the boards will in pleasure, if you wanna kick this, it may be more of a workshop conversation, because there's a lot of different articulations with that. But to answer your question in a sense, um, you know, masks are definitely something that we've mandated across the board. And so, the teacher really directs when there is opportunities to then lower your mask, as I'm doing right now. I'm not saying that students don't have some type of choice. I mean, that could, you know, let a teacher know. I mean, in the same way that they let a teacher know if they needed water, let a teacher know if they needed to go to the bathroom. So, I don't want you to feel like there's no student choice at all, but we really try to s- not necessarily have a lot of gray area or back and forth as far as having the mask on. We wanted to make sure that the masks are utilized and used at all times, even with our teachers. That's the recent guidance we just sent, sent out. As far as, we know that there's times where, hey, you may wanna, you know, shift your mask down to the, your chin or whatever the case may be, or we take it off. But we wanna make sure that those opportunities are limited. And, and the reason why I'm saying that this is a more nuanced conver- conversation, because you haven't even felt the level of concern that a lot of our staff around the masks, around the desk shields, that I'm, I'm not able to articulate to you right now. That I'm, I'm not able to articulate to you right now. And so to answer your question, it's really teacher, in a sense, driven. I'm not saying students couldn't ask the teacher, like I said, for a break or whatever the case may be, but it is more from the standpoint of, hey, the teacher can direct this. And in, in the event, many of the examples I use, um, when you're trying to help a student, you feel some level of discomfort because that's a lot of what our teachers' concerns are. They could ask for the student to then put their mask, you know, back up on their face uh, in order for him to work with them closely. So I hope that answers your question to a certain.
He also asked if they have, do they have, I think, trying to figure out the choice of when they can use the screen and take the mask off.
Yeah, I think there's, so I, I think I've kind of answered this in the sense of like with K through eight, it's a requirement to have the, the, the shield up at all times. And so with a mask at that time, that if you take your mask down, you have breaks within the, using the desk shield to take that mask down. Are there breaks when there's not a mask as well? Yes, but again, we wanna make sure that's really few and far between, just because there's then no barriers at all as far as health and safety.
Masks always, so even if they have their desk shield, it's not like they put their desk shield up and their mask comes off. It's not one or the other.
But that was, that was the premise of buying the desk shields, was so that you didn't have to wear the mask.
And it allows for breaks, but it's not, if you have your de- if you sat behind your desk shield all day long, that you would, you can take your mask off, but it's very teacher directed. Like, hey, let's take a mask break, let's do that. So that the desk shields allow for that, yes.
That's changed, because the concept of the desk shield was because the teacher can't see the facial expressions and all the other reasons. And because, uh, the sound, the sound is muffled and everything.
Yep.
So, in effect, what I'm hearing is, we bought those, but then since that time, we changed and said you have to wear a mask anyway.
Well, a lot has changed, yeah.
So then why would you need the desk shield?
Right.
Well, no.
K to eight is still using them.
Again, and this is where I tried to just articulate, I don't think you have listened to the level of concern from our staff around the desk shields. We wouldn't have shown up on a Sunday night if they weren't gonna be important for us even to start operation day one. And so I don't want you to think, even with a mask and the desk shield, that it was just gonna, it doesn't matter. It, it matters greatly. If we were to take that away, please believe there would be tons of teachers coming to the board meeting to discuss what that means. And so.
But you're saying it doesn't matter for nine through twelve, that they don't want them?
I, I'm not saying it doesn't matter for nine through twelve. I'm saying that there was an option more for student led if you would like to get that desk shield from that standpoint, excuse me, from that standpoint.
So we're requiring both at the K A level?
K A.
And I think I've, I think again, we've, I don't wanna go over the same reasons I just went over. There's, there's different documented reasons why it's, it was an option at nine through twelve and then K eight. And I, I, again, I don't.
Again, that was not the original concept as I understood it. It was, it was you bought the desk shields so you didn't have to wear the mask.
Change on those too.
Initially, they said we could wear face shields and then that as an effective means, and then they said we can't.
And remember, when we ordered the desk shields, I believe we started that process in June and ordered in July.
Right.
So a lot has really changed.
Criticizing, you know?
No, I, I don't hear criticism.
It's just that we need, things have changed and that's, I think, the issue here. People don't understand the new rules.
And that's what I'm saying, let's do a workshop, because it's a lot more, it's a lot more elongated than even what I'm trying to explain right now.
Sudden to go into all of the details, so it might be better if we.
Because of that, I want the clarification, but to answer Stacy's question, I think our families need that clarification as well. And I think that's what you're asking for, which, absolutely. That, and so.
And I don't want my kids to be the only ones walking around with it, because.
Right. But if they are available.
But if they are and you want it, you should do that. And I would, you know me, I would.
Well, but I think that that requires us to, yeah, ferret that out a little bit further. I know, we're only in week three. I know, we've had a lot of stuff. But because we are asked as, as board members, we do get asked questions about, to, to clarify. And so I think just a, just a streamline of actually what the process is and what's happening would be really helpful.
Listening, probably learned a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, I just, the, the biggest piece was just, there's a lot of work. And I think I've even had this conversation with a teacher recently that, you know, made a similar comment about, hey, why don't you just do this? It's like, yeah, like, there's like hundreds of people that have been a part of work. I just wanna make sure we're honoring their voice.
I'm sorry, I'm not diminishing any of that Kingsley, not at all. I was just trying to figure out where the, the gap in communication was. And then what, you, are we seeing kids utilizing these? And if not, do you think we could find a way for them to be utilized? That's all.
Could we?
Well, we should be able to send something. We have Tara right here, so she can draft something and get something out to high school parents and reminding them. Masks are available, desk shields are available, and here's what you just need to do. So we can, we actually have a communication getting ready to go out anyway, so we can certainly.
That's all, thank you.
And we can come back to, in, to Kingsley's point and Lyle's point. We can come back to what that.
Policy ought to evolve, you know, I'm, I would love to be able to get rid of the facials because they've, they, I mean, the mask because they, you know, muffle the sound, you can't hear, and you can't see people's expressions. So, you know, if they're required right now, fine. But if we can find a way around that, I would welcome an opportunity to, you know, change the policy. We need to.
Yeah, we did go to.
And I think Kingsley, it would be good if you did have, you know, the reason in why a lot of the high school ki- teachers chose that it would not be a good idea, because I can see.
You could get that to us and we could have a work session and talk about it more.
And I can see more germs carrying that thing around all day.
Well, I think that was, and how they get cleaned, and yeah. Okay, okay, I'm gonna stop. Okay, Lyle. You're certainly not last but least.
But, yeah, I'm least, I'm sure. Um, Jane mentions, she's proud of what the district, the district responds. And, and I'm, I'm pretty pleased to particularly, you know, directors of any organization have several responsibilities. But a couple of them is really fidelity of the mission, to the mission, and stability of leadership. And I think on those scores, you know, if you read our mission statement up there, it's all about kids. So the fidelity is to educating kids. And so I'm really pleased that, I don't hear anybody in our organization that's waffling about whether or not we should follow our mission statement and educate kids unlike some other districts in the state, you know, saying, well, maybe we should just give up the mission. Well, uh, or comp- or compromise it to, to a large degree. So, so I'm, I'm pretty pleased about that. Uh, now, the mission statement is, is, say, is just about kids. It doesn't mention any adults. But obviously to execute the mission statement, you're going to the people portion there. And, and you know, attract and retain quality people, align talent with the needs. Uh, there's a lot of flexibility there. And I think, as I understand it, we've been pretty accommodating Kingsley and, and other peoples in terms of, of analyzing each individual employee's situation. I wouldn't call it a I E P quite yet, an individual employment plan. But it, it, it kind of is that, because everybody's circumstance is a little different. So I think it's the right approach and effective approach. And, and, uh, hopefully we can educate kids effectively, both, both in person and, and virtually. Again, I've got a few questions on the virtual side. The other one is stability of leadership, you know, and we talked about the contract, uh, Dr. Lindman a couple of weeks ago. But, you know, the aspect we didn't talk about that's so important, I think, is the three year duration. Because, uh, you know, I feel fortunate, we have a, a, an experienced captain uh, to navigate these uncharted and, and turbulent waters, at least for the foreseeable future. So as our responsibilities as overall board directors, in terms of fidelity of the mission and, and the organization that's doing that, and then the stability of leadership and the quality of leadership, uh, like I say, from Dr. Lindman on down, and, and everybody seems to be really on the same page on that. So I really, I really feel good about, uh, our district, particularly when I compare it to some other ones in the state that were really kid focused. And sometimes that's easy, sometimes it's not so easy. Right now, it's not so easy. But, but we're, we're true to that mission. So those are my comments.
Thank you. All right, uh, then seeing nothing else to come before the board, I would, I'm not gonna comment. I'm, I'm, you know, I, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be real honest. It's, it's, it's my anniversary tonight, so I'm trying to, I know, I'm gonna have dinner, I'm gonna have dinner with my husband. So I'm gonna, I'm not gonna make any comments, and I can't believe I just said that on this thing. So just pretend like I didn't say that.
And you haven't ordered your salad yet?
Oh, my gosh. Okay, anyway, so the next time we will be back in this room is September twenty eighth for our next board meeting. And until then, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless, okay, in the second, thank you. And all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night. Thank you.